We're getting ready to start our Full County Commission meeting. Anyone that would like to sign the public comment sheet, please come forward. We're getting ready to start our meeting. I ask that you clear the chambers if you don't have a seat. If you're sitting in a spot that is not spaced, unless it's a family member sitting next to you, I ask that you vacate the seat and I will ask the sheriff to clear the commission chambers. Thank you so much. We'll file this meeting to order.
All rise. Oh yes, oh yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Our pastor tonight, Mr. Kevin Rector, the lead pastor at Gallatin First Church of Nazarene at 407 Northwater Avenue. After college and four years in the U.S. Army, he earned a master's degree in theology from Trebekka Nazarene University. We actually went there together at the same time and entered into full-time ministry. He's been serving the people of Gallatin for almost three years. He and his wife Andrea have four children ages 10 to 16. Andrea works as a social worker at the Sarah Cannon Cancer Center and their children attend various Sumner County schools. Thank you Pastor Rector.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today so thankful for the opportunity to live in a country where we have freedom to assemble, to care for the concerns of the population. We thank you, Lord, for those who give their time to serve as commissioners and to serve to benefit our community. We thank you for the citizens who come to participate in our democratic process. Heavenly Father, we pray that where there are passions, Lord, they'll be tempered by your spirit of kindness and generosity. We pray where there may be disagreements that there will not be disagreeableness. We ask you, Lord, to guide and lead and direct the proceedings of this commission as they work for the benefit of our community. We pray this in the great name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll. Roll call is now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence. Seventeen members are present. Twenty-two present. We showed you voting. Oh, the screen is not working. Screen's down. We have, how did you have, Mr. Graves? I mean, excuse me, Mr. Kemp. I show Mr. Mansfield, Mr. Graves, Mr. Mansfield, Mr. Taylor voted no. Mr. Graves is absent today. He's going to be out tonight. Mr. Mansfield's present. Mr. Mansfield is present. Mr. Taylor's present. Mr. Taylor is present. And I'm picking you up in the queue now, Commissioner Taylor. Okay. No, I think he's just checking his button. You were just checking your button, right? You might want to tell everybody. Okay, let me, now that we've got our roll call, let me just tell you, we're experiencing some technical difficulties. The meeting is streaming live. The back monitor and this monitor are out. The projector's not working tonight. So we will, you know, normally we just kind of roll on and let everybody look at the board. When we finish a vote, I will announce the vote total and then if anybody wants to stop us to clarify on how they voted, we'll do that. But I think we can proceed pretty normally and then we can recap as needed and step back. All right. Your regular consent agenda are before you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Kruger. Okay, let me get, I'll come to you in a second, Commissioner Taylor. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Second, Commissioner Chris Taylor, Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, we had $250,000 carryover from school construction process. Is there an explanation to what that is?
Where are you in the agenda, Mr. Taylor?
Some of the consent agenda.
What's that? Are you wanting to pull that off the consent agenda or you just want an explanation?
I don't want to pull it off. I just, I thought we could get a quick explanation of what it was. I wouldn't have to pull it off.
Okay, it's, go ahead, Mr. Long.
There was back, I believe it was probably 2017, the school, you know, receives $2.8 million each year from the capital. That year, they had $100,000 for each high school that can match $100,000 and $50,000 for each high school. These projects are ongoing because they're bid and they're construction, so that's the carryover from those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, I see no one else in the queue. All in favor of approving the regular consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, please show that Commissioner Mo Taylor voted no. I have 22 affirmatives and one no. All right. Your minutes are in your packet. Is there a motion to approve our minutes? Motion made by Commissioner Foster, is there a second? Commissioner Ring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, recognition of the public. Does anyone else wish to sign up for public comments tonight? Anyone else wish to sign? Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. All right, let me go through, I know we have some. Okay. While she's signing up, I'll go ahead and walk through the rules a little bit. What I would encourage everyone to remember is, is that our rules of decorum in the chamber is that you address the chair and not the audience and not the individual commissioners, but you represent, I represent the commission. You address your comments to me or to the commission, but not to individual commissioners. Ask that you not say derogatory comments about any citizen or group in Sumner County. Also, I would remind everyone that our public comments here are directed towards items that are on the agenda, so if you deviate from what's on the agenda, I will kind of gently try to guide you back on to what's allowable under our rules of decorum and order. Each person will have five minutes to speak. You don't have to take five minutes, but you have five minutes and Mr. Kemp will give you a one-minute warning. And then we will move forward from there. All right, first up, we have Colonel Don Scruggs, 141 Bush Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. Following Colonel Scruggs, we have Van Oldham. I'll go ahead and call the next person just so if you want to come on in, if you're up next, you can come in and stand or wait so we can kind of speed things up a little bit, maximize our time. Go ahead, Colonel Scruggs.
May it please the court, I'm Don Scruggs, 141 Bush Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. I want to talk tonight about the Guy Comer barn.
Excuse me?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm here to talk about the Guy Comer barn and I hate it that I'm not loud enough for everybody back there because I know you can't hear, I'm just back here. Guys, I've heard people say this is a historical monument. It's not. It's 20 years older than I am and I'm not historic yet, just about it, but ain't yet. I can take you to 100 barns in Sumner County, it's older than it is. Sumner County is a tobacco county, not a horse county, and I could have took you to a barn, the best barn in Sumner County was on the Franklin property where they built the new Knox Dahl school, didn't have a hole in it nowhere. I've been in it, been all through it, it ain't got a hole in it, we didn't have a hole in the roof, didn't have a plank missing on it. The nicest barn in this county and they took a dozer and pushed it down for that school. Totally destroyed it, nobody had a GoFundMe page for it, nobody stood out there and sung songs and nobody made a big fuss about it. They tore it down. In a tobacco county, they tore down the best tobacco barn, tore it down, totally demolished it. Probably wasn't much younger than the barn we're talking about tonight. I have no problem with you honoring Guy Comer or Mont Comer or the guy that made them, which is Dollar General, the people at Dollar General, Cal Turner and all them, I would wish you would honor them. If you want to put a statue out here in the courthouse of all three men, that would suit me fine. The problem I've got with the barn is that it's not historical. The thing is filled to the ground, it's rotten down, it's going to have to be totally demolished before you can rebuild it and do anything with it and it's a waste of my tax dollars. I've asked you before, and everybody knows that, it's been on record, I want that money, that hospital money to go towards the deputy school program. I want that totally funded and then some and I want it to be plenty of money in there because that's the most important expenditure in this county, is putting a gun in every school and protecting these kids. These grandkids deserve it. This money can do it, with just plenty of money to do it, plenty of money to fund it that you're going to waste on this barn tonight. So I'm asking you nicely to honor Guy Comer the best you can. If you want to bronze a pair of Washington DC overhauls and hang them in the courthouse, that suits me fine and I'm proud that we had the owner of Washington DC overhaul company to live in Sumner County. But Guy and Mont came from Monroe County, Kentucky, and Mr., the guy from Dollar General, Cal Turner, he came from Allen County, Kentucky. So every one of them came from out of Kentucky, which is our local and I'm glad they were and I'm glad to be neighbors with them and I'm proud that I was neighbors with Guy Comer and Mont Comer and all the rest of them. But guys, we can honor them without spending millions of dollars, without spending a half a million, without spending three and a half million. I'm asking you nicely to think about what you're fixing to vote on, think about the mess you're fixing to vote for, you're not going to get, you're not going to get anything for your money and it's a waste of my tax dollars. And yes, it does have an opportunity cost and opportunity cost is the safety of our grandkids in the schools when you spend that money on the barn and ain't got it to put back in the, on the schools, the grandkids of this county. And that's what I'm respectfully asking you to do tonight, is to think about why you're spending money, remember what that nasty barn looks like, remember it ain't, it ain't very old. I can take you to 100 that's older, there's plenty of old barns in this county that I can take you to tonight that's older than it is. I appreciate Guy Comer, I appreciate what he did to this county and appreciate that he was what he was. And you can honor him tonight by voting for a statue out there for him, you can bronze a pair of overhauls and that suits me fine. I appreciate it if you do that, but it ain't about Guy Comer, it's about wasting a half a million of my dollars that could be going to protect my grandkids, which I don't have grandkids, but I will have maybe one of these days or of course a great-grand. I mean, I'm to the point now where I could have great-grandkids, I guess, but anyway, and I know I probably won't have none, but the county has got grandkids that needs to be protected and we need to take it serious because we can do it now, we can stick all that money in the hospital fund that we're going to waste on the barn into the deputy school program and it will be funded forever and it'll be taken care of in case we build new schools. And that's what I ask you to do tonight, is to trash this project, stick that money in the deputy school program and take care of my money that way and I do appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you, Colonel Scruggs. Mr. Van Oldham. Jenny Hall Plunkett is after Mr. Oldham. Mr. Oldham is from 108 The Landings, Hendersonville, Tennessee. Mr. Oldham, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Hi, Van Oldham, 108 The Landings, Hendersonville. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Just full disclosure, I used to work at Greenlit Design, I don't work there anymore. I am not being compensated for being here. I'm here because I care about Sumner County. This is where I'm from, this is where my family's from and I think the Meadows is going to be an added benefit to the county. I think that it really is going to make things much, much better. It's a very quality design. It has a lot of interconnectivity that's going to help with traffic and something that it also has in it that's really important to me is that it does a lot for stormwater. There's going to be a lot of stormwater features that are going to be very environmentally beneficial and that's going to be extremely positive. Like I said, I understand that, I understand the need to preserve this area. I understand that this area is important and there are people moving here from all over the country. I've lived all over the country and I came home to raise my family for a reason. It's a great place to live. We have great weather, we have a great climate, we have great scenery, we have wonderful taxes in comparison to some places that I've lived. That is why people are coming here and they're not going to stop, they're going to continue coming here. And when we have the opportunity to take, you know, 1,200 homes and put them into one place, that is preserving Sumner County. You know, when we put four and five lot subdivisions all over the county every single month, you know, that's where the division comes from. I mean, I'm old enough to remember when Gallatin stopped at the Kmart, you know? I know where the drive-in was, okay? And I remember that when you drove up Dobbin's Pike, there wasn't but three or four driveways the whole way up the thing, right? I remember that. That's not the way it is anymore. Having extremely dense developments where you can put a lot of people in one spot keeps that from getting worse and that's what's really important from an engineering perspective and that's why I'm for it because I live here, because this is my home and because it's going to make it better. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Oldham. Ms. Jenny Hall Plunkett, Mr. Bob Brown will be up next. Ms. Plunkett, you have five minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Hall Plunkett. I live at 395 Devon Chase Hill in Gallatin. Tonight, the commission votes on two measures that represent a long-term financial commitment for us taxpayers. I'm here tonight to ensure that our elected representatives cast their votes in full knowledge of the scope of those commitments and the wishes of we, the people, those two issues being the Comer Barn and the Meadows annexation. These projects made me think of the word boondoggle, a word with two meanings. As a noun, it means work or activity that is wasteful or pointless, but gives the appearance of having value. Used as a verb, it means to waste money or time on unnecessary or questionable projects. If ever there were textbook illustrations of the word boondoggle, the Comer Barn and the Meadows annexation would be them. There are citizens in Sumner County today who were here before the barn. It is not a historic building. In fact, if the word historic is even associated with the Comer Barn, the county would be in violation of its lease with the Rogers Group, the privately held corporation that owns the barn. Yes, the agreement says that any effort to designate the building as historic would result in revocation of the lease. The lease grants the county access only to the building itself and five feet of land surrounding the building plus access to its driveway. This means that the county has no rights to land to set up the heavy equipment required for repairs. The county has no rights to land for a parking lot should the building ever become usable. Sumner County would have to enter into a separate agreement with the Rogers Group at who knows what cost just to do renovation work, which must be approved by the Rogers Group in advance. This brings me to the exorbitant amount of money it would take to make the Comer Barn safe for any public use. Yes, the county has secured a grant of $250,000 from the state, providing the matching funds requested tonight or approved, but the money is just not worth the commitment that comes with it. Even the total $500,000 were spent on roofing, which probably wouldn't be enough to complete the job. The structural integrity of the building is so compromised that the cost of bringing the barn up to safety standards will be several million dollars. From where will that money come? The hospital fund? During a pandemic? The commission must decide whether the COVID threat is serious enough to require wearing masks in public or if COVID is benign enough that we can commit millions of hospital dollars to shore up a privately owned building. It can't be both. This lease is not a win-win. On the contrary, an approval vote tonight will have the county obligated to restore a building owned by the Rogers Group on their land. Even so, the lease is not fee simple. That means the county can spend all kinds of public funds on the building, but the land and the minerals underneath it still belong to the Rogers Group and they can do with it as they wish. If they blast or tunnel underneath the barn and it collapses, the county will have no means to recover what has been lost. This is a bad deal that benefits no one except the Rogers Group. Another bad idea is the proposed annexation of the area known as the Beddows. Tonight's vote is the culmination of at least 15 years of questionable actions on the part of the owner. According to the Tennessee Star, this land has been the subject of multiple lawsuits for breach of contract, a TBI criminal investigation into a former Gallatin city councilman who received consultant fees from the owner, and attempts dating back to 2015 to gain an approval vote from the county commission that would benefit the owner and stick taxpayers with the bill. All of these attempts were met with strong opposition from Sumner County residents. I urge the commission to defeat this resolution and end the Meadows project once and for all. Like the Comer Barn, the proposed annexation benefits no one except the private landowner who lives in Arizona. Approval means development that exceeds the city of Gallatin's current infrastructure limits for roads and police firing EMT services, depends on CSX approval of a railroad overpass that by all accounts is not likely to happen and most certainly will require additional school construction. The 2018 approval for new schools came with a $96 million price tag. It doesn't take a math whiz to realize servicing the Meadows will require additional taxes. Last summer, I attended a town hall meeting in which Mayor Brown herself said that Gallatin had reached a saturation point in development. Do we want to be like Davidson County? Earlier this year, Metro Davidson government approved a 34% property tax hike. I'm one of the people who chose to call Sumner County home because it isn't Davidson County. We don't want to have Sumner County turned into Metro Davidson East. Commissioners, I implore you to hear the voice of the people and vote no on both the Comer Barn and the Meadows project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plunkett. All right, I would ask, you know, generally in county commission meetings, we don't applaud at the end of speakers. I'd ask everyone to refrain from applause. Mr. Brown, you're up next. Bob Brown, 587 Forest Retreat Road, Hendersonville, Tennessee. I would also ask everybody as you come to speak, if you would please, if you'd please leave your mask on, I know it's inconvenient for speaking, but it provides more safety for everybody in the chamber. So Mr. Brown's up now, Mr. Fred Duffer is up next.
Bob Brown, 587 Forest Retreat Road, Hendersonville, Tennessee. I would like to talk about two agendas tonight being discussed. First, the inter-local agreement for the Meadows annexation as a subdivision is not a contiguous part of the city of Gallatin and does not make sense and lays a heavy tax burden on the Sumner County resident. It would be an island in the county that would belong to the city of Gallatin. This tract of land owned by Tina Earp, who now lives in Arizona, has been fraught with unethical conduct and doubt as to the fate of the surrounding rural farms of the area. Farms are still a major contributor to Tennessee's economy, adding $1.3 billion. Why do we want to destroy part of our economy? Schools and infrastructure have to be created in a rural area away from the city without even knowing what the impact of such a development would do to the area. We have seen over and over again the rush to development in this county without considering schools, roads, water, sewage, fire service and police service with the accompanying tax burden heaped upon the Sumner County citizens because real pre-planning has not been done as a part of the development strategy. There are too many unknowns at this time. Secondly, the Comer Barn is a money pit that the Sumner County taxpayer will never own as public land or a structure due to the loopholes and the deed and lease is associated with it. The deed is constructed so that the structure is barely owned by the county and is landlocked and the land around it is not or never will be owned by the county. The mineral rights are owned by the adjacent mining company, the Rogers Group, and they can take all the rock under the structure at any time for 100 years. The half a million dollars, half from the state grant and the other half from the Sumner County hospital fund that is being slated for improvements to the roof will revert back to the owner if improvements are not made on it within five years. Due to the restrictions by the Rogers Group on the Comer House and Comer Barn documents, the buildings are prohibited from being designated as historic. That restriction may prevent access to the funding for preservation and restoration of the Comer Barn. The memorandum of understanding that is being presented tonight that is supposed to resolve concerns does not address all the issues and says so within the document. I ask the question, what are we going to do with a building next to a mine with blasting going on all the time shaking an already questionable structure to the ground and the land that we, the taxpayer, will never own? The taxpayer cannot even claim damages if blasting damages any of the renovated structures. The county also has to carry general liability insurance and umbrella coverage as well with the lease. I've seen it, the house, the fence and my father, as we would drive past it on Gallatin Road, would always comment, boy, that sure is an expensive fence. But I thought it's a nice structure. Building was nice when I was a boy, but today it just doesn't make sense. There are too many loopholes and hoops to jump through. The taxpayer would be putting a roof on the barn for the Rogers Group at the very least. They can arbitrarily at any time decide the improvements do not meet the lease, terminate the lease within 60 days' notice and reacquire the property even after millions are spent improving it. Please vote against both of these proposals, the inter-local agreement for the Meadows annexation and the Comer Barn lease and improvements. Our elected officials should be working on behalf of their constituents and not for, just for those whom they receive campaign donations. Leaders are servants of all and it is just common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Fred Duffer is up next. Mr. Frosty Gregory will follow Mr. Duffer. Fred Duffer. Mr. Duffer is from 816 Lock 4 Road, number 301, Gallatin, Tennessee. You can come on up, Mr. Duffer. You have five minutes, Mr. Duffer. You have five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yes, sir.
I have severe COPD.
Yes, sir.
Would it be acceptable for me to?
Sure. That'd be fine. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Hello, my name is Fred Duffer. I'm a citizen of Gallatin. I'm in, excuse me, dilemma over this Comer Barn. I don't think this Comer Barn needs to be rebuilt. It is a four walls and that's all you have. I don't think our tax dollars need to be spent on rebuilding this thing and I literally call it a thing because it's pretty to look at when you drive by and that's it. It serves no useful purpose without an extensive amount of tax dollars to go with it. I don't want to see my tax dollars spent that way. I understand that there is a $250,000 match for the city versus the grant. I understand that we don't have to put 250,000 with that match. Either way it goes, there doesn't need to be any money spent on this. Either way it goes, there doesn't need to be any money spent on this barn, in my opinion. My other complaint is the Meadows addition. I can't see hop, skipping, and jumping around throughout the county to put in subdivisions that we're going to pay for. We're going to lose Police Department out of it. We're going to lose Fire Department out of it. Because if there's a call there, that means they're not in town here where they belong. They're out in the county. Because you've made an island out there for them. I don't, I don't agree with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Duffer. Mr. Frosty Gregory is up next. Mr. Robert Ream is after Mr. Gregory. You have five minutes, Mr. Gregory.
Frosty Gregory, 201 Wallace Road. I joined the Meadows property for mile and nine tenths on the north side. Commissioners, I'm not going to insult your intelligence by sitting here and repeating things that I've said in the past. You've heard me, you know how I feel. I'm not up here to tell you how wonderful I am or nothing, but I want this thing to happen. I want people to own the homes that join me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Robert Ream and Rush Rannier, I think it is, will be on deck. Mr. Ream, you have five minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I think I sent each of y'all an email last week, even though it was misspelled and unproofed by my librarian wife. But the point is, is that I live right next door to this property. And my debate is property ownership or rental property. It's going to happen one way or the other. These people own the property. They're going to have somebody spend the money on the property to develop either duplexes or privately owned houses. I'd rather have somebody that has a vested interest in their property, just like the rest of us, and want to take care of it than to have a bunch of renters that may or may not do that. So it's going to happen one way or the other. Schools are still going to be involved in it. Police is going to be involved with it, just be the county. Fire Department will be involved in it. The money's still going to be spent. The county needs to vote yes to the Meadows, no for the duplexes. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ream. Rush Rannier, I think, and then John Miller will be up next. Mr. Rannier, did I get your last name right?
Rannier.
Yes, sir, okay. Mr. Rannier, you have five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so Russ Rannier, 199 Rannier Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. I am in favor of the Meadows. I think it is the best thing that can happen to this property. They have developed a plan that I think is close to what you could call affordable housing, as close as they can get to affordable housing nowadays. I don't expect it'll be what you call cheap housing because I don't think there is such a thing these days. But I don't know how you can get much closer to affordable housing. And like I say, I don't believe it'll be cheap housing, but and affordable is just hard to come by these days. So I believe it'll be a benefit to Sumner County. I believe it'll be a benefit to the city of Gallatin. Please vote in favor of the inter-local agreement. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Rannier. Mr. John Miller is up now, and Susie Robinson will follow Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, you have five minutes.
Here we are. The Meadows, Chapter 43, Comer Barn, Chapter 15. No matter how many times the public gets up here and says no, the answer's always yes. Let's get a couple things out in the open. As the Comer Barn Agreement is written, along with the memorandum of understanding, I'm 100% opposed to it. And with a little leeway from Mr. Langford and his gavel, this governing body is simply not trusted by the citizens, and the citizens are fearful of a tax increase. That being said, I did have an opportunity to go inside and look at the Comer Barn with my own eyes a week ago. To say the least, I was surprised. It really is a terrific structure. I lived in Boston, among several other towns and cities, before retiring here 16 years ago. My very first thought inside that barn was back to Quincy Market in Boston. In 1970, the wharf was abandoned. It was a shelter for the homeless. It was a shooting gallery for the drug addicts. It was a wreck. It was fallen down. That year, the city of Boston secured a $2 million grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to restore the roof and the facade of the building built in 1826. Boston used that grant to hire professional architects, engineers, and contractors skilled in this kind of restoration. But the city also, at that time, gave the citizens a clear vision of what could be. The people rallied. They secured millions in private funding, grants, and donations, and contracted with a group that shared the vision and developed a new building form called the Festival Marketplace. That marketplace opened in 1976. Today, it is a thriving center and a magnet for drawing thousands of tourists and generating tens of millions of dollars in revenue to the city of Boston. It's likely the single largest tourist attraction in Boston. Why not the Comer Barn? Regardless of so much talk of it being an event center, it really would be a horrible, horrible event center. The barn is close to a football field and lengthwood stalls of gorgeous wood on both sides with an eight-foot bridle path between the stalls for saddling and taking care of the horses. It's nowhere near the Epic Center. It's nowhere near Bagsby Ranch. It's a barn. I'm suggesting that we might think of this as becoming a festival marketplace, that the county would lease to an independent company to operate and manage. So I'd like to make the following suggestions. One, let's not keep trying to amend a bad deal. A bad deal is just that. It's a bad deal, and this is a bad deal. Let's write our own deal. Two, let's write our own deal as to what's acceptable to the county and let us deliver it to Rogers. Let's negotiate from the county's strength instead of weakness. Three, to write that deal, I would propose that one or two commissioners, with no political or personal ties, including but not limited to accepting contributions from Rogers, be assigned to this group. Also included would be two or three citizens, not the ones we always use. These citizens can't have any personal or professional ties with Rogers and must be skilled in negotiations. We also need an attorney who is not employed by the county. No offense, Leo. This group would be charged with writing a completely new agreement, which then would be presented to the county commission for approval. Once approved, that group, that group, not the mayor, will bring that agreement to Rogers for approval. This could be a win-win situation for the county. If Rogers agrees and gives the county a clean deed, the county wins. If Rogers rejects the contract, the county wins. Rogers becomes the bad guy. Five, while negotiation is in process, I propose that a second group be formed with the same type of selection criteria to explore ideas and contact companies who run these types of venues. This group would work independently, assuming Rogers will give a clean a free and clear deed to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Your time's up.
I got two more, okay?
Now your time's up, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Susie Robinson is up next. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Susie Robinson is up next. David Klein will be following Ms. Robinson. Ms. Robinson, you'll have, when you begin speaking, you'll have five minutes.
Number six, this Festival Marketplace will be a destination for citizens as well as a location to tourists. Seven, you can see images of this at quincymarket.com. Mr. Miller thinks this idea provides a vision for the citizens to rally around, includes the citizens in the decisions, and lessens the look and possibility of political impropriety. And finally, it puts control of the negotiations into the hands of the county and away from Rogers. Thank you all for allowing me to share this with everyone. I don't have a lot to say because everybody else has already spoken, but I took time out of my night to come up here, so by golly, I'm speaking. I don't think you'll find anybody that doesn't like the barn and want it to be preserved, but I'm not spending my tax money on fixing it up. If the Rogers Group wants to negotiate something, they've had five years to come up with something else. To do this big of a vote in a pandemic when you've got so few people sitting here and people standing out there, I think it's disgraceful. I would like to see where all the pro-Comer Barn people are because I don't think they're up here. They might be emailing y'all. If they are, we'll never know. But I don't know of a lot of people that are willing to spend more money throwing it into the Comer Barn. And let's see. Private funding or a GoFundMe that was set up 11 days ago has not even made it halfway there. So I think that speaks a lot to how many people are willing to pitch in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. David Klein is up next. Michelle Devance will follow him. Mr. Klein, you have five minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I live at 398 Branham Mill Road, outside of the city of Gallatin. It's in the county area. I have lived here for 22 years, and for about 15 years of that, this little city of Gallatin was calm and well-controlled. The streets were good. Things seemed to be managed well. Property taxes never went up, as I recall. And in the last five years, with the little article that said we were the nicest town in the country, we have seen exponential growth that has tested all of our infrastructure countywide. What astounds me, as a former builder in the Southern California area, is that this commission has seemingly done nothing as far as impact fees. The last project I remember working on in Southern California was 100 Home Tract in Corona. And by the time I finished my due diligence, before you turned a shovel of dirt, the impact fees were $50,000 a house in a time when a 2,000-square-foot house was about $250,000 in Southern California. It's my understanding that in Sumner County and as well as other counties, that really the only impact fee we have is a school impact fee of about 70 cents a square foot. Now, if we attach that to the Meadows project, which I know we're voting on tonight, we have 1,100 to 1,200 houses. At roughly 2,000 square foot a house, we would come up with $1,400 a home to pay for all the infrastructure changes that are going to be required to accommodate this development. If the school itself is going to be about $100 million, we're going to run about $98 million short. And that's before we talk about any other infrastructure increases, storm drain, water, sewer, street widening. Where I live, near Sideview and any of those up in our area, would know that we have gridlock from 4:00 to 6:00 every evening from Tennessee Hardware all the way to Airport Road. I don't see that there is any way to pay for widening that two-lane highway. It's an arterial highway, but there's just no way to pay for it. And it will continue on to Bethpage and Westmoreland. So I am asking you to get serious about impact fees. My next-door neighbor built a house after he bought that 700 and 7 and 1/2 acres. And I welcomed him into the neighborhood, but I didn't offer to pay part of his mortgage. And when we don't take care of impact fees in this county, you're asking everybody in this room to subsidize the developments that are coming into this area. That's not right. It's not fair. Whether we were grandfathered in, those of us who bought used or new houses, the county was manageable at the time. It's not now. And in order for us to pay for all of the things, you cannot expect it to be on the backs of the people who live here now. We cannot raise our property taxes enough. The developers must contribute. That money will be passed on to the homeowners. And if the market will bear it, fine, the market will bear it. But if it doesn't, it won't. So if I could make a recommendation, before we do one more development in this county, we should consider a full-blown moratorium until we make a plan to understand how we're going to pay for traffic signals, street widening, water runoff from roofs that run into the storm drains, sewer, everything that's required in a civilized neighborhood to accommodate this kind of growth, and not just this, but all the growth that we're seeing right now. We must manage our growth, and I implore you, please, 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 slow down the growth and make things happen as far as impact fees. It's the only way we're going to get out of this mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Ms. Devance is up now. Kevin Baker will follow her. You have five minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to talk really loud so people back there can hear me. I've been in the back, so I really apologize if I'm talking really loud for everyone up here, but we can't hear back there. And there's about 25 citizens back in the foyer, and we can't hear. So I, tonight, I wanted to talk about the Comer Barn, but mostly the Meadows. Regarding the Comer Barn, instead of spending money on fixing a barn, we need to fix our audio system because it's kind of crazy that people can't hear in a public meeting. But I was coming, actually, to give a suggestion, a solution for the barn because I love historic things, and the barn is beautiful. And I have one of the oldest historic homes in Sumner County, and we have some acres. And if the county would like to move the barn to my property, I'll fix it up. So that's a solution, and that's a win-win. But mostly, I want to talk about the Meadows. Because I live in Gallatin, and I don't want any more tax raises. Like, our taxes keep getting raised, and this is going to cause a tax raise. And y'all really socked it to us last year with a tax raise, and we don't want another one. So I think I couldn't hear what people were saying. I think people were making good points because I listened to everything that happened at the city. I went to every meeting at the city. I've been to every city council meeting at the city for the last three years, except I might have missed a few. So I paid attention to what was happening. I'm sure all of y'all have heard really good points that were made by all of the other citizens, so I'm not going to reiterate. But I'm just going to say, it's not, it doesn't make sense. Gallatin can't afford it. We just had a pandemic budget that the mayor presented, and our city council passed. They cut our road repair budget, and it's silly for us to expand to the north, and we're expanding right now to the west with a Twin Eagles annexation. We're expanding to the east with a Bloodsow Springs annexation. And we're just going at all corners, and we can't afford it. We can't afford to keep adding land and adding more road repairs when... We can't afford to keep adding land and adding more road repairs when we can't even keep up with the ones we already have. We just cut that budget. So the Meadows, Gallatin can't afford it right now. It's a bad idea. It's a non-contiguous annexation. We're jumping over a bunch of land out in the county, and regardless of what, like, if it's not fair to people who live around it or not, the people who already live in the city, we don't want a tax increase. We don't want it. It's, it, we can't afford it right now. So that's it. Sorry I've been yelling. I hope y'all could hear me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devance. All right. Hey, let me just remind everybody while Mr. Kevin Begert is up next, as he comes, Mr. John Perrier will follow him. Just a reminder to everybody to please keep your mask on while you speak, just for the safety of everybody in the building. Mr. Begert, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. What do I say? Where do I begin? Can y'all hear me back there? Okay. First of all, I don't think I've ever seen this group looking any better than tonight, honestly. Also, I have to think, as I'm standing out there, I'm thinking, but this is going to be the best meeting I've ever attended at the county commission chambers, because I can't hear anything, so I'm not getting aggravated. My blood pressure's not going up. Wonderful. I appreciate it. Thank you. Also, before I get to the meat of what I wanted to talk about, Governor Lee appreciates the fact that you're going to be recognizing him tonight. He was disappointed that he couldn't be here, but he understands, and will be celebrating accordingly. Anyhow, Comer Barn, is this really government's role to be involved in a event center, to spend money on things that aren't necessarily part of our, our basic mission statement? I think not. I think it's a bad idea, but you've heard me say this how many times now? I don't want to wear out a, wear out my welcome. But the Meadows, what about three houses per acre constitutes a Meadows? Maybe in New York City, certainly not in Tennessee. I'm starting to think that I'm living in a democratically-run county, because they're perfect at, they say one thing and do something else. They, they tell you what they're going to do. They, they say, oh, yeah, we're for, what, Black Lives Matter. Let's use that one. And yet, they consistently oppress blacks, but whatever, I'm going off topic. But the Meadows is a bad idea. We're already borrowing money to build more schools. We're going to force-fit 1,100 and something houses onto 300 acres. Like I say, it's a bad idea, folks. Let it grow organically. We don't need that in Sumner County right now. Revenues are already down. Why burden the existing citizens with more tax burden? Because you know it's coming, when we have to build another campus up there on the hill. I urge you to vote against the Meadows. I urge you to vote against the Comer Barn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Begert. Mr. Perrier. Ms. Allison Turner will follow Mr. Perrier. Mr. Perrier, you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, my name is John Perrier, and I'm a lifelong resident of Gallatin. And I love my community because of the people, places, culture, and the history that surrounds us. The Comer Barn has been a part of the landscape all my life. I do realize it's not as old as some other places here in the county. I suppose I always took for granted that it would always be there. Every single visitor I've ever brought to Gallatin has asked me to tell them the backstory of that building, because it is our gateway into Gallatin. And that question opens the door to a great deal of discussion about the history of, of Gallatin and Sumner County. And, you know, when I get started on history, it's hard to get stopped. The first gentleman who spoke, a Colonel, I believe, pointed out that Sumner County was a tobacco county, and he's absolutely correct on that. But I would respectfully disagree about it not being a horse county either. You know that horse traders in the 19th century could run their hand down the foreleg of an animal, a horse, and immediately tell that that animal was from Sumner County. Well, not from Sumner County, but from Middle Tennessee. And they would pay a premium for that animal. And this was because the horse had such strong bone structure, which was the result, which was a result of the high levels of phosphorus in the soil. You see, the body can't make use of calcium without adequate levels of phosphorus present. And if you've ever taken a soil sample in your lawn, you know that the phosphorus is off the charts. Middle Tennessee was an epicenter of horse breeding for this very reason, and Sumner County certainly played a part in that. The war, the Civil War, destroyed that industry locally, and investors moved their money north behind federal lines to Lexington, Kentucky, another region, as it so happens, that's very high in phosphorus. So I suppose if it hadn't been for the Civil War, we might be celebrating the Tennessee Derby rather than the Kentucky Derby. Now, in 1929, the Southern Grassland Association tried to revitalize the thoroughbred racing industry here in Sumner County, and it was a bold and ambitious plan. They brought, bought up land and even built a rail spur off the L and N Railroad in anticipation of the crowds that would travel here for the races. But, and it would have been a success, but I don't need to tell you all that story. We're limited for time. The Great Depression of the 1930s struck and put an end to all that. Today, though, we're presented with an opportunity to preserve this element of our past and what it represents in the way of the history of our county. A generous gift of the building by Rogers Group, a long-term lease on the property, I hope my facts are right, $100 a year. And Senator Farrell Hale has secured a $250,000 state grant, which requires a dollar-for-dollar match by the county to preserve and restore the site. But these opportunities all expire in another nine months or so. If we fail to act upon the building, it would revert to Rogers Group. Now, in a recent memo, Rogers Group has already removed the controversial rescission clause for down the road. If we had made improvements, and then they would take it back. That's no longer an issue. So to me, it would all seem to be a pretty easy decision, but then along comes COVID-19 and a downturn in the economy and a decline in sales tax revenues. So I see a pattern emerging here. Mark Twain once said, "History doesn't repeat itself, but it often rhymes." So I respect the fact that the members of this county commission have a very difficult decision to make, and you serve as stewards of the county finances, and you want to be conservative when it comes to spending money, especially during a time when tax revenues are down. Personally, I respect whichever decision you reach, and I know you're making it in the best interest of the county. However, you'll probably receive criticism for either way you vote on the issue. I understand this, because I'm also speaking to you in my capacity as chairman of the Gallatin Planning Commission. And I've served on that board for 15 years, and I certainly understand how difficult it can be make, it can be to make a decision on a controversial topic like this. I can tell you, in my experience with the Gallatin Planning Commission, though, is that there won't be another opportunity to preserve this site if we let this opportunity slip away. This is prime real estate, as you all know, and it will be developed quickly if it becomes available to developers. There will be nothing the Planning Commission can or should do to prevent that from happening. I'm a firm believer in private property rights and development rights. So I'll leave you with one thought. The Civil War came to an end, and so did the Great Depression, and so will this pandemic. And I just hope that the Comer Barn and the history that it represents can still be a part of the landscape for my children to enjoy as I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. Allison Turner is up next. Joe Wallace will follow Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner, you have five minutes.
My name is Allison Garrett Turner, and I'm with Greenlid Design. We represent the Meadows property. This project has been worked, in its current form, has been under consideration and worked on for over a year with the city of Gallatin, meeting. It has gone through the process to meet all of the requirements of the Sumner County 2035 Plan, the city of Gallatin's 2020 Long Range Plan, and trying to address the concerns that were laid out years ago with lots of forethought of how this area was, would be developed. I'm a longtime resident of Gallatin. Our family, my family's from Gallatin, so it's important to me that Gallatin grows in a way that we can handle. I've also been a civil engineer for a long time, worked many years in Franklin, and I see where we're going, like it or not. It's coming, so we have to choose how we go. The advantage to this property developing under this, under this plan is that it's a large-scale plan where you get to choose how it gets developed. Gallatin spent a lot of time working with the developer to come up with a concept plan. Things can still be modified and changed slightly, but any major changes will go back before the city as an amendment to the concept or preliminary plat. So there is comfort in knowing that it's not, it doesn't just get written off quickly. Any major changes have to go back through the city council as well as the planning commission. So that should help with a comfort level for this project long-term. Those are not necessarily the issues for the county itself, because we are here trying, strictly on the inter-local agreement, but all of that affects how this property develops. It's better to take a large piece of property and have a well-defined plan for it than have it piecemeal develop without consistent energy, you know, thought process on how the roads connect, how we create connectivity for other properties, so that we don't end up with a situation where we have extended backups on, you know, Nashville Pike. All of those, you can't do that if you're piecemealing a piece here, five acres there, 10 acres there. Having a large tract of land gives you an opportunity to make big-scale plans. And so we would appreciate your approval tonight, and let us go forward through the city of Gallatin and work with them on how to best develop this property, because it will be developed one way or another. It's just a choice of how we go forward, whether it's this developer or someone else, because that's how, how we're growing, and we're growing quickly. So I appreciate your time, and well, I'll be here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Mr. Joe Wallace. Ms. Leanne Thomas will follow Mr. Wallace. Mr. Wallace, you have five minutes.
Yes, sir. I don't want you all to get worried. My name's Joe Wallace. I live at 445 Wallace Road, Gallatin, Tennessee. Don't you get worried that I've got a long speech. Only thing I've got on here is a picture of a bunch of buildings that I'm going to talk about in just a minute. First of all, you already know that I'm 72 years old, if you remember, and I spent 68 years in Sumner County. While I was in the Coast Guard, I was in California, Florida, and Mobile, Alabama, and Stratford, Connecticut, and there's no place like Sumner County. I'm proud to be from here, and I'm glad to be back. We own, my wife and I own property next to this Meadows. A lot of things have been said tonight that I agree with, even though they're on the opposite side of the table. And I would like to see this Meadows farm remain a farm. Part of the land is my mama's home place, so I've got an emotional connection with it. But when I say part of the farm, I'm talking about the farm that I envision, which is a pastoral farm, you know, beautiful green pastures, that sort of thing. I'm going to talk about two new things tonight, and one of them is not brand-new. One of the commissioners, and I'm not going to say his name out of courtesy to the chairman, but one of the commissioners at a previous meeting about this same piece of land, when it was for a different purpose, gave a warning to the audience that when you think of agriculture, you better think clearly, because you may get more than you wish for. And most of the audience didn't know what he was talking about, but I'm familiar, because of my farm background, with confinement livestock operations. And I can get on Dominique Pike, Highway 174. I can drive north to Highway 52 in Sumner County, turn right on Highway 52 toward Westmoreland, and turn left within a mile on the first main road to the left, and drive less than a mile, and there will be a building, which what, from your Google map, looks like a real nice pond that you could go fishing at, but it's not a pond. It's an open pit full of raw sewage, and the barn is a hog containment barn. You can drive less than a mile north of that, still in Sumner County, and there are five houses over 200 feet long that have a chicken operation inside there. And a chicken operation has its own unique smell. There are friends of mine that say the hogs are 10 times worse. My daddy was a hog farmer, and he would disagree. He said hogs smell like money. I thought they smelled like S-H-I-T. I love bacon, and I love ham, but I don't love hogs. At any rate, that's in Sumner County. If you had to drive up Highway 31 toward, and through Westmoreland into Kentucky, halfway between Westmoreland and Scottsville, Kentucky, you turn to the left and go less than a mile, and you'll see this right here, these buildings. There's over 20 buildings, and there's four so-called ponds out beside of them. You don't want to go fishing in those ponds. It's raw sewage. Okay? Now, they won't let me come into this property for obvious reasons, but I understand that this is a faring operation where they produce baby pigs. And they have to take these baby pigs and ship them out to this other kind of operation, which is right up here above Highway 52. And they want as many of those as they can get as close to this operation as they can possibly be. And this operation's only been built for a few years. Okay? Most of you know that China bought Smithfield. They didn't do that to invest in the United States economy. They did that because the communist government in China has made a deal with their citizens. You do what we say, and we'll feed you. And their objective is to let the American farmer raise the hogs, and they will import from America the protein, and they'll leave us the shee. And all of you know where that it goes. Okay? Now, this property, the Meadows property, yeah, I'd like for it to stay a farm, but not this. And if this lands, this, this property's been before this body several times. If this land, pardon me?
Your time's up.
Is that the warning or the end?
That's it.
Okay.
Finish up with one sentence, Mr. Wallace, if you can.
All right. I'm just asking you, I'm just saying one more thing. If a buyer who's a farmer buys this property and puts this in here, everybody that's spoken against this will be here begging you to give it to the city, but at that time, the owner won't want it in the city. You got an owner that wants it in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. I appreciate it. Yes, sir. Ms. Leanne Thomas. Mr. Kyle Robinson will be next. Okay, she's, let's go ahead. Okay, there she is. I'm sorry. Ms. Thomas. Ms. Thomas, you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. My name is Leanna Thomas. I live at 902 Wallace Road in Gallatin, Tennessee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. First, the Meadows interlocal agreement with the city that is before you tonight appears to come across as merely a decision which roads would become the county's responsibility versus the city's. At face value, that might be in the wordage, but that would be a gross misconception. A yes vote would ensure that this development is built, and a no vote would prevent it. There is more than road responsibility. There is county, school responsibility. There is county, school responsibilities, and safety of citizens at stake. This type of spot zoning lends itself to a unique and dangerous situation regarding firearms. If the Meadows land becomes city land, it is then sandwiched between county land. Now, we all know that hunting season or not, people like to shoot their guns, and bullets don't always mind a specific pattern. Plus, let's face it, some people are a bad shot. What happens if these stray bullets penetrate the boundary of a county property and go into this city property? Simply put, disaster. It's not safe. Last, the development has no developer, except I heard somebody talking about a developer, so that's news to us, if there is a developer. And it isn't consistent with the character of the surrounding properties, and that does not follow the county's own newly adopted zoning guidelines. I'm asking you to let the landowner develop the property at the zoning at which it was bought, or at the most recent one that was given to her by the Sumner County Board of Appeals. There are other options besides the Meadows with no known developer and no contract with CSX, and complete destruction of our rural way of life. Now, I'd ask you to look around this room tonight. Space is what we need now during a pandemic. We need more of it, not less of it, moving forward. Sometimes less is more. Now, I'm just going to talk to you. My paper was blank for most of the day today because this has been going on for a really long time. And I can look at every single one of you guys, and I have something nice to say about everybody. I think that you're trying to do the best that you can do with the circumstances in which you're given. I think that the circumstances in which we're given here are not good circumstances. I think that it could be something better. I think it could be safer. I think that it could be better for everyone involved, everyone in the entire county, not just the people in that area. I feel like it's going to cost a lot of money and services. I don't think it is just about a road and who gets responsibility for what road. I feel like that's just what's on the superficial surface of that. So it's easy to say that's only what we're doing here tonight, but there is more to that. The other thing is that I'd like you to think not just with your head, but think with your heart. What got me so involved in this situation was that I wanted to care and do what I could for the people around me. Sometimes I think that's what you're called to do, is to care about people and do what you can for them. This is not going to be directly right in my backyard. Is it going to cause problems for me? Yeah, but it's not going to cause me problems like it will the Dojers or the Whitakers or some of the other people down the road. But for them, you're, you're changing their whole landscape that they worked their entire lives for, that they bought their properties for, for a farm. Some stuff just needs to stay county land, and it isn't safe. And you do have to worry about bullets flying. That is the truth. So I'd ask that you just think about it more than just, you know, in a black and white. It's not all black and white. Sometimes there is some gray in there, and I do appreciate each of you, and I know you have a hard job to do, but I do think that this was the wrong thing to do. And so I would appreciate that you have a no vote on the Meadows. I believe we can do something better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for allowing me to-
Yes, ma'am.
-have the ability to-
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Anytime. Thank you. Mr. Kyle Robinson, Mr. Robinson, you'll have five minutes once you start speaking. Ms. Ruth Fennell will be up next.
Kyle Robinson, 4014 Upper Station Camp. I came in with two things to talk about, now I have three, so I'm going to be quick. A lot of the stuff that I'm going to say has already been said. I think as citizens, as tax-paying, tax-paying citizens, what we expect is that there be some planning and some transparency on what's going on on these two projects that are on the agenda tonight. And I hear things and I see things, and I don't necessarily have any, any opposition to how the property at the Meadows itself is designed or laid out. It could be fantastic. That's not really what y'all should be taking into consideration and voting on. How does putting over 1,000 homes in that one spot affect the county from an infrastructure perspective? That's what you should be considering. Developmentally, the property could be fine. I don't, I do not understand the argument that putting that many homes in one area is better than spreading them out. How many kids, how many school-aged kids are going to be in those 1,100 homes? How many cars are going to be in those 1,100 homes? How's that going to impact traffic? Anybody that knows anything about the way logistics and things work, bottlenecking, that's going to create huge bottlenecks. We already have issues with roads in the area anyway. What roads are going to have to be improved? What's that going to cost? What schools are going to have to be built? What's that going to cost? We're only $300 million in debt. We're in good shape. Let's borrow some more money because from an infrastructure perspective, how do we pay for it? We borrow money and we increase taxes to pay the loans. It's getting a little out of control. So on to the next thing. So I say no on the Meadows mainly because we need to know what it's going to cost and what the effects are going to be to the county as a whole, not just that, not just that piece of property, the Comer Barn. Please do not spend a half a million dollars on something that we have no idea what we're going to be using it for. I know at the legislative or at the committee meeting, there was discussion on putting together a committee specifically to figure out what we can do with that building. Great. We've had the property four-and-a-half-years, about time. Let's figure out what we're going to do with it and what it's going to cost before we spend money. I, I hear the arguments of, well, it's from the hospital fund. It's not taxpayer money. How was the hospital purchased? Taxpayer money. Okay. We get state grants. $250,000 from the state. Is it free? Maybe to the county on a budget line item it is. Where does the state get its money? Taxes or from the federal government in the form of a grant? How does the federal government get its money? Taxes or they borrow money from other countries, which we have to pay back with taxes with interest? So it's a fallacy to sit here and say that you're not spending taxpayer money on this. Any government that is spending money on anything is taxpayer money to a certain degree. Third thing, I'm not sure who came up with the strategy here for the, the audience, the gallery. If this were truly a safety issue, and it could be, if it were serious, why are we even having this meeting? Putting, putting something on the agenda in a situation like this, and you've got people standing out there where I was just at, and you can't hear a dang thing. This is ridiculous. And I'm, I'm not pointing at you guys on this, but look at how close you are sitting. You are wearing masks. Look out there. Who's not wearing masks? We can't sit next to each other, even if we want to. I was asked to move by someone. And the person making those decisions, and I'm not going to call anybody out, you are putting law enforcement in a really bad spot. That's a joke. Y'all, y'all can't, y'all can't let us make the decision to sit next to somebody wearing a mask. So it's, that's all I have to say. I mean, this is, this is, this is towards y'all. This is y'all's commission. Y'all can make a decision.
All right, Mr. Robinson. Let's stick to an agenda item. This is not on the agenda, so you can wrap up or you can talk about an agenda item.
This is a little, this is too important to me to just, to not say anything. You've got people standing in the hallway that can't hear.
All right, you're out of order. Mr. Robinson, your time's up. Thank you. Mr. Weatherford.
Do something about it, all of you.
Mr. Martin.
This is ridiculous.
All right, Ms. Fennell, you're, you're up now. Mr. Dave Dozier will be on deck. Ms. Fennell, you'll have five minutes once you begin speaking.
I'm back. Okay. Ruth Fennell, 1049 Blue Jay Wake, Gallatin, Tennessee. You've heard it before, I still live there. First of all, I have to give credit where credit is due. There are people trying to shove through the Meadows and the Comer Barn down the throats of Sumner County taxpayers who are tenacious. They are persistent. They will fight the good fight and will not give up. I guess we seem to have a failure to communicate, though, because there are some people who don't know what the word "no" means. And the times that I have been here to speak about this, I've heard more "no's" than "yeses." And the "yeses" that I heard tend to be from people directly involved in the project. So they're getting some kind of a benefit from this versus the people of Sumner County who are going to have to pay for it. So at best, I want to think positive, and the ones who want to get these projects funded may be thinking with their hearts. Leanna spoke about that, said that, you know, talks with your heart. Well, you know what Winston Churchill said? If you're not a liberal at 20, you don't have a heart. If you're not a conservative at 40, you have no brain. Okay? So that's true. However, all of you are over 20, so you may have a heart, which is good, but my question to you is, most of you are over 40, so do you have a brain? Do you, can you think-
Ms. Fennell, that's not necessary. Please move on to something on the agenda.
I am. I'm talking about the Comer Barn and the Meadows and spending taxpayer money.
Okay, we'll talk about that, please.
Okay. So most of you have, have campaigned in Sumner, Sumner County as being a conservative, which means that you're going to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. But sometimes your votes and your actions and your choices seem to fly in the face of that. Now, Wikipedia defines a conservative as someone who supports tradition, organic society, a hierarchy, authority, and property rights. Here in Sumner County, our Republican Party defines it also as people who believe in limited government and fiscal responsibility. And I know a lot of you consider yourselves Republican, and I know a lot of you consider yourselves conservative. However, the fact that this commission has voted for property tax increases in five years and put us almost $400 million in debt, including principal and interest that we are responsible for, says to me that only a few of you truly meet that definition. So what about the rest of you? We know that actions speak louder than words, and if we look at what you do, not what you say, if we look at your actions and not your words, then I have to ask, do you really think that you are for responsible government, limited government, and fiscal responsibility? How are you going to define yourself to the citizens in the next election? There are votes such as the Comer Barn and such as the Meadows that indicate thinking with your heart. Lot of people love that building, sentimental attachment to a lot of people. I fully understand that. But if the owners don't care enough to take care of it, why do the taxpayers have to step up and do that? Okay? I know that some people have tried to do a GoFundMe. I applaud that. I think that's a good effort. I just think it's too little, too late. We've owned it, well, we've leased it for four-and-a-half-years, and during that time, we've not taken any action to protect it. Okay? So it's just continued to deteriorate. I'm going to ask you to stop thinking in terms of taking advantage of other people's money, which is my money and the taxpayers' money, but it's, that money belongs to the citizens, and how it's spent is up to you, not the developers, not the companies that donate to campaign funds, and not special interest groups. You are the ones who make the things about Sumner County unique and a very special place to live. I have seen a lot of sad things happen in the last five years, things that I don't agree with, but I've tried to stand and at least express my opinion. We have differences, but I still respect you and I appreciate your service. But I'm going to respectfully ask you to vote no on Comer Barn funding and no on the Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fennell. Mr. Dave Dozier, Ms. Tanya Dozier will be on deck.
Excuse me. We've got to make things safe around here, huh?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Okay. I hope you feel a little safer now. I was safe before. Set her off without the mask, but that's a separate subject.
Mr. Dozier, you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Dozier. I live at 567 Dobbins Pike. I'm going to speak very loud because my fellow citizens back there are being denied the opportunity to hear what's going on, so I will speak loudly, so please overlook that if I seem to be hollering. I'm here this evening to voice my opposition to this inter-local agreement between the city and the county. Specifically, I am in opposition to the Meadows development. This is a rural area. If you have not driven out there, you need to go out there and take a look. It is a rural area. It is not meant for 1,100 or 1,200 homes to be packed into that area. It is rural. When the owner purchased it, she knew it wasn't for a high-capacity area. She knew it wasn't for duplexes. She knew it was a beautiful countryside and it would destroy our way of life. Why are these people back there? That's the reason. We live in this rural area because we choose to live there. We like the view. We like not seeing rooftops out our back door. The landowner does not even live in this state, yet we're sitting here considering this request. We've worked for years to improve our properties. All of the folks that live out there in that area have. We've been good citizens of Sumner County. We paid our taxes. As taxes has increased, we've paid them. But if you vote for this agreement, you are telling each of us as landowners and citizens that our rights do not matter. Now, I know many of you here on this commission, and I have a great respect for every single person here. I wouldn't want to be in your seat. You can't please everybody, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to serve, but you need to slow down and think about what's happening in this county. We cannot absorb 1,100 new homes. You're dropping the size of Westmoreland or better in my backyard. Have you considered that? Dobbins Pike itself is already dangerous. Just a few weeks ago, we, we witnessed a rollover of an accident there. The curvy Gibbs Lane, increased traffic going north. Now, with these plans of adding another 1,500 to 2,000 cars per day on this road, if I were to go around and ask you, have you driven it? Could you tell me you've driven it? Have you been there during traffic hour? Do your children drive that road? Do your children and your grandchildren drive that road? Mine do. I do not want this increased traffic in that area. We are really going to load this volume of traffic up on top of what we already have? I see little to no planned modification for Dobbins Pike. It might be a little different if we had some plans for Dobbins Pike. I don't see any. And then I see what's happening right now on Albert Gallatin and Hatton Track. Is this what's going to occur if we do this development? Am I going to be driving around barrels day after day in curves? Go out there to Albert Gallatin and Dobbins Pike at that intersection and sit there with your children and your grandchildren in the car, and you tell me that's what you're going to build there? We need to relook at this. Unfortunately, I believe we're already experiencing how this development's being managed when we look at Hatton Track. I know that's a city. I'll deal with the city on that, and I'll go up there and speak to that, but the county needs to be aware of that. It's a mess and it's dangerous. The north side of this town never gets the attention that the south side does. That's part of my concern with this development. Number three, quickly, the larger issue, absolute uncontrolled growth. What are we thinking, people? How much more are you going to pack into this county? You wait till this COVID thing's over, and it will, but you will not be able to move. I've been to the city, and we've talked to the city about what's going on. They look at us like we've got three eyes in our head. We're telling them, you can't move now. What are you going to do? But yet, we sit and we build and we build. I am not opposed to growth at all, but we need to be very careful about that. Our infrastructure, services, schools simply can't continue to support this, and you've heard the issue about a tax increase. Folks, don't bring it back to these citizens. We are not going to be happy campers. Learn to live within our budget. Please, please. Learn to live within our budget, please, please, think about that. County commissioners, I appreciate everything each one of you do. I don't always agree with you, but I appreciate each one of you to be able to serve, and I thank you for that. Stop. Please, slow down. Please, think about this. Think about the tax increase, the dangers on Dobbin's Pike, before you pack 1,100 homes into that area. I'm not opposed to growth, but let's do it right, let's do it correctly. I'd also like to finish up by saying, when we have a meeting of this nature, it would be very nice if our taxpaying fellow citizens could hear what's going on instead of having a closed-door meeting.[634.14][634.14](applause) This meeting should have been postponed, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman. I apologize if I'm going over the rules. This meeting should have been postponed, or the AV system should have been fixed. This does not go down well with the citizens of Sumner County. And I am upset. Yes, I am upset. So please, consider what you're doing in the light of the taxpaying citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier.[661.13][661.13](applause) Ms. Tanya Dozier is up next. Mr. Jimmy Johnson will follow Ms. Dozier.
Well, I can follow that.
Ms. Dozier, you'll have five minutes once you start talking.
If I can talk that loud. They tell me I'm quiet, but I'll yell too. And I get a little bit country, because I'm from country. I appreciate y'all letting me be here. Tanya Dozier, 567 Dobbin's Pike. My home faces Dobbin's Pike. It backs up to the planned meadows. And I can see it from my back door. Some say I can't, but invite them to come see it. Yes, I sure can see it right from my back door. I'd just like y'all to look how many here against this. We've been through this time and time and time again. Some of y'all are so tired of hearing it, and I know you are, but you're going to hear it one more time, because every time I get a chance to speak against it, I'm going to. It's my right. Thank God the people before you all gave us that right, or we might not be getting it. I'd just like, there's at least nineteen, I'm the twentieth person standing out there against this. Look how many people come and have come and spoken against this. But you go right on, it runs right on through, like a lot of other things. And I think that at the city level, it wasn't even supposed to have been approved, because I think there's some ordinance or law or something that they're not supposed to annex any more land until they've met all their obligations of existing annexations. But somehow, this is going to set a precedent, too. There may be other lands that you've already done it to, I don't know. I don't need me to be stepping on your toes, but this is spot zoning. It's surrounded by county, and you're going to allow city to be right in the middle of county land. And what you're going to do is set off a chain reaction, too, because I know there's a lot of folks that are around it that are going to come to you with their hands up saying, "Oh, it annexed me too, rezonate, I want to go commercial." You're going to change the environment out there so much. Like I think Leanna was saying, we're county, we're Sum County. I can go in my backyard, and I can set up my targets, and I can shoot my guns. And we do. But when there's a neighborhood back there, you've got to think about that. So you're going to be infringing on our county, isn't that right, Mr. Taylor? On our county rights. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Jeremy Mansfield and Mo Taylor for all the work they have done for us in working against this development. They have been tremendous, tremendous help to us. Thank y'all so much. As I said, you're going to change the environment out there. There's going to be 1,115 units. I don't care for the plan myself. I like yards and driveways and things, but there's going to be homes with alleyways and that sort of thing. And that brings me to, if this is, we were told way back that this was to serve people that were older. Oh, there's not going to be any kids in there? There's not going to be any kids. You don't have to worry about the schools and overcrowding the schools. It's all going to be older folks in there, because older people want smaller homes and smaller yards, or no yard and that sort of thing. But I've heard that there's an industrial area around Hatton Track now, because the Facebook took the other 800 acres. There's an industrial area, and that this neighborhood is to provide a place for the people that work there to live. Well, I have to wonder what's going to be in that industrial area, what am I going to be breathing? And then, those people are not going to be old and retired. I'm old, so I can say old, I'm old. They're not going to be old and retired. They're going to be working people. They're going to be working, vibrant, with children people. And then there's the bridge, that lovely bridge, that I believe the city approved this based upon the building of a bridge over Computer Lane. Now, a gentleman from Computer Lane that lives on it spoke at one of the meetings and said, "I don't know how y'all think you're going to build a bridge, because we're not, that's a private, Computer Lane's a private drive." And they told us they can't even go to the CSX until this is all approved. So, we'll see when that bridge gets built.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier.
Well, and then there's the square issue, too. Thank you all for listening. (inaudible). Obviously, religious or religion are very important.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Mr. Jimmy Johnston. Ms. Wanda McVeigh will follow Mr. Johnston. Mr. Johnston, you have five minutes once you start speaking.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Langford, members of the commission, I am Jimmy Johnston, head of the Forest Sumner Economic Partnership, and our office is located in the American Job Center at 1598 Greenlee Boulevard here in Gallatin. I stand before you tonight in support of the resolution authorizing a plan for the Comer Barn preservation. The homes we live in, the places that we work, the buildings we congregate in, the roads we travel, at one time, they were all green fields, pasture land, maybe even farms. They were natural and they were beautiful. Economic and community development at its core is about establishing the opportunity to generate wealth, both personally through our jobs and work ethic, but also for the community, again, through our jobs and education systems and our work ethic. Quality of life is a familiar term used to describe a community's amenities such as schools, hospitals, parks, culture, and history. The Stone or Comer Barn is an icon, a touchstone, for many who have lived, worked, and visited Sumner County, a visual landmark and presence of our culture, past, present, and future. This is a quality-of-life project. There's a saying in economic development that if you do not win Phase 1, I can assure you, you will not receive Phase 2. The recently announced Facebook Data Center here in Gallatin is a multi-phase project. The corporate project offers a multi-layered economic impact, from the construction cycle to the energy consumption, to the stable and significant property tax revenues for generations to come. The leadership in Gallatin, and you on this commission, and in this county administration, you won that project. I can assure you that you cannot win Phase 2 or Phase 3 if the Phase 1 investment had never been made. The Stone Comer Barn is a Phase 1 preservation project. This phase is to both maintain and assure the structural integrity of the barn. To do so requires an investment of public capital. Tonight, there's an opportunity to leverage state grant dollars with the local grant dollars. The investment of these public monies will create construction jobs and the opportunity for private sector contractors to generate wealth for their company and their employees. In this policy and political discourse, some would suggest that the Comer Barn preservation is not worth a public investment. This county commission and current administration has an outstanding track record of wise, conservative stewards of the public dollars. You have and continue to balance budgets and make investments for the future while maintaining low debt. You have achieved a AA+ bond rating that allowed for historically low 1.57% rate on the current $100 million bond. We think it's the lowest ever issued in the state of Tennessee. This is a quiet, out-of-the-headlines part of governing. That builds communities' quality of life and allows for the private sector to create jobs, build, and create wealth for their employees. I humbly encourage you to make this public investment for the preservation of the Comer Barn. One of the best reasons for this body to vote for the investment is this project is spearheaded by one of your own. Commissioner Deanna DeWitt is committed to bringing community and private sector partners to this project. You and your families will look back and be glad that you helped preserve part of our culture, our history, with a visual iconic landmark of the past, smack dab in the gateway to the future of Sumner County. Thank you for your time, consideration, and for your public service.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Ms. Wanda McVeigh is up. Ms. Margaret Whitaker will follow Ms. McVeigh. Ms. McVeigh, you'll have five minutes when you start speaking.
I'm also going to speak very loudly, because I was out in the foyer, and those people cannot hear a thing that's going on, which is a travesty. I ask you to vote "no." I see that you have just been handed the answer to your barn situation. You have a private citizen who will pay for the restoration if you just move it to her property. That's a win-win. You don't even have, we don't even have to pay for it. And take it away from our hospital? That's inconceivable. The hospital services our entire county, and you want to take it from them to put it on a barn? This lady has given you your answer, you need to take it. And as far as the subdivision, the meadows, I say if you can guarantee the citizens of Sumner County that we won't have a 10-year tax increase to cover the utilities and the roads and the structures that will have to go in to support this, we'll take it. But until then, we won't. I live in Twin Eagle Subdivision, which is basically, we're over 50% senior citizen. Our website, our subdivision website, has been blowing up with this for two weeks. So I am going to say that I'm representing Twin Eagle Subdivision. So, you've got a lot more people opposing it than are here tonight. So you need to stop and think about your citizens rather than someone who, someone out of state who's wanting to make a big bundle of money off of Sumner County citizens. Please vote "no." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McVeigh. Ms. Margaret Whitaker is up. Ms. Alice Riordan will follow Ms. Whitaker. Ms. Whitaker, you'll have five minutes once you start speaking.
All right, thank you. My name is Margaret Whitaker, and I live at 539 Dobbin's Pike. That address may sound familiar to some of you. I live next door to where this project wants to happen, and in front of it. That land backs up to my five acres, and where they want to put the entrance to that, that's where I am, right next to it. Just like Mr. Dozier said, Dobbin's Pike is dangerous. Didn't used to be, but it is now. And where you pull out of my driveway there, there's a little hill right above it. And those cars come over that hill, and they're just like a racetrack, just one right after the other, the other, the other. I don't know how many cars will be able to get out of that driveway. My family, we have trouble every time. We've had wrecks out there, people hitting us, trying to turn in to my driveway. So that's one thing, one reason that I am against the meadows. I've lived there since 1978. We've never had any problems. All good neighbors. You've got a big enough piece of land with five acres that you've got some freedom. You can send your kids out in the backyard, and there they go. We've got horses, send them to the barn, and there they go. We've even got a big enough front yard that they can play ball out there. But you put that many cars coming in and out right there, they won't be out there anymore. I'll be afraid for them to be out there. If this development would be on five-acre tracks, that'd be great. You'd sure cut down on some of that traffic, you'd cut down on some of that schools, you'd cut down on fire department, you'd cut down on the police department. I'm just saying that in my opinion, and it's been my opinion for several years, that this is not the way to go with almost 400 acres of land. Putting that many people in that space is not a good idea. And I wish that everyone would please, please, consider what it's going to do, how it's going to affect not just me, not just the Dozier's, it's going to affect the whole county. Anybody that is in that area is going to affect. It's not a good idea. And I'm not, as I can recall, ever begged anybody for anything. But I'm begging y'all to please, think about this, think what it's going to do if we allow the annexation and the rezoning of this area. I ask you, please, 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 use your best judgment. I'm an old woman, and I'm tired of fighting this, but I will until I can't do it anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Ms. Alice Riordan. Mr. Jimmy Overton will follow Ms. Riordan. Ms. Riordan, you'll have five minutes when you start speaking.
I'm going to try and speak loudly. I've always thought I did, but I don't know if I do or not. My name is Alice Riordan, Alice Riordan. This is the first time I have been to one of the council meetings. I'm here opposed to the meadows. I'm doing that because I live on Phosphate Lane, which is off of Dobbin's Pike, and I have personal reasons for that. Number one, I really don't think it has been thawed out well enough. And secondly, and I say that because every time I hear about it, it changes. Originally, I was told there were going to be homes that were $600,000 homes. Then the next thing I hear, well, they're going to be less than that. I heard there were going to be houses on like, one house per every acre, and then all of a sudden, I hear there's three houses per acre. So it keeps changing every time you turn around. I don't think it has been thawed out well enough. On a personal basis, I look at it, as I said, I live on Phosphate Lane. I have to turn on Dobbin's Pike every day, and I'm wondering what is going to happen when they, if it is approved, what is going to happen to Dobbin's Pike? As Mr. Dozier pointed out, if you drive Dobbin's Pike and Albert Lane right now, or 109, whatever you want to call it, that is a joke. There are so many barrels there that you really don't know which way to go. Well, what happens if they decide to build the meadows and they put that entrance into the meadows, right there off of Dobbin's Pike? Is it going to take as long to build that, to get the road back, as it took to build 109, South 109? Are we going to be looking at that for the next 10 years, the way they're doing that? How long is it going to take? And then also, has it been thought about, what is it going to produce? Now, when I say "produce," I'm talking waste. If we bring another 1,100 families in there, we're going to have more waste that's going to affect our water system. And if you look at our trash, right here in Sumner County, right here in Gallatin, where is all this trash going to go? If you have to take your trash to have it burned, or whatever we do now, where we take hours, we have to stand in line sometimes for an hour just to get our trash. hours, we have to stand in line sometimes for an hour just to get our trash. What's going to happen with all this other? You're going to tell me the city's going to take care of it if we're annexing it to the city? I really don't think this project has been thought out. I don't think it's a benefit for Sumner County. I don't think it's a benefit for us, the people who live up in that area, and yes, it is, I guess you say, the north part of Gallatin. When we bought our little nine acres up there on Phosphate Lane, we thought we were out in the middle of nowhere. And we thought we own an area where we could get back in town with no problem. Just in the past six months, all of a sudden, we're fighting main traffic. And if we have 1,100 houses coming up there, even if they're, if they're just smaller homes and they have a two-car garage, you're talking 2,200 more cars going up and down Dobbin's Pike? Has anybody thought about how that's going to affect Dobbin's Pike? Again, I said I don't think it's been thought out. I'm opposed to it, and I really hope that you all vote against the meadows because it is not profitable any way you look at it for Sumner County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riordan. Mr. Jimmy Overton. We're starting to have five minutes when you begin speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I know you have a hard job to do. We've been talking about this project for the meadows for a long time. I know these citizens that live here doesn't like growth. A lot of people doesn't like growth. But unfortunately, this landowner has come to the city and wants to annex in the city of Gallatin. We went through a lot of planning. We went through a planning department. We went through a lot of meetings. We've done annexation studies on it. We've done a lot of things. And we know that if the city of Gallatin has control of this project, that we'll make it a nice project. We know that we've already put in, into it, into this plan, that if the bridge doesn't get built, they have to put up bonds to build this. We know that it'll get done, or they won't be able to do this project. We make them do traffic studies. We know these roads will have to be improved. Nobody likes growth, and I feel for them. I have many, many of these neighbors out here, friends of mine. But ladies and gentlemen, tonight, I just want to assure you, you're here to vote on one thing, and that's the local agreement. That's interlocal agreement. You're not here about the subdivision, you're here about the interlocal agreement. And I just ask you to keep it at that because the city of Gallatin will be sure this is a nice development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. All right, I would, that is the end of public comments. I would propose we take a 10-minute break and come back at 9:03 without objection. Give everybody a little bit of time to get back seated. All right, I want to, back to my report. I report to the chair. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Driver.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a moment to say a word of appreciation to everybody that called. A lot of you called and checked on me multiple times through the death of my brother, my mother, and my wife and I being in the hospital. And so I just want to make sure I appreciate it. I'd also say that there were people out here in the audience today that also checked on us, and I thank you, and I thank you for your continued prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driver. We're so glad that Lisa is home and recovering and that you're on the mend as well. So our prayers continue to be with you and your family. All right, your veteran service report is attached. Is there a motion to approve the docketting approval for the letter from Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury for the fiscal year 2021 budget? Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion for docketing the report on debt obligation form CT 0253 and the summary of 2020 bond information?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Sullivan, seconded by Commissioner Rhodes. See no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, let the record reflect that Commissioner Mo Taylor and Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield voted no. So I have 21 affirmatives and two nays. Okay. 2008-03, adopting the interlocal agreement between the city of Gallatin and Sumner County for the annexation of the meadows and provision of urban services. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Billy Gomenden. All right, as we, as we move into, I see a couple people lining up in the queue. Let me remind everyone that as we debate this tonight, we are not debating the development. The debate is on the interlocal agreement with the county and the city of Gallatin. So let me just remind everyone of that as we begin our debate, our discussion. Yes, sir.
The development is attached to the agenda. The development does not happen without our approval.
Yes, sir, but what we are discussing...
So we are...
No, sir. What we are discussing tonight is the interlocal agreement.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, is comments need to be developed, need to be connected to the interlocal agreement.
Okay.
And the, and the package. Okay, thank you. Actually, Mr. Taylor, you're, you were first in the queue. If you want to just go ahead.
Well, that was actually where I was going to start off at, on what you just said.
Yes, sir.
Because it does not happen without it. And I also want to get the politics out of the way, in my opinion. There's also a thing running parallel with this through the zoning board of appeals. That's another development for the same piece of property that's a duplex development. So that's a scare tactic, in my opinion. If you don't approve this interlocal agreement, we're going to come back to the county, and we're going to propose a duplex development. That's a scare tactic. It's as old as the hills. If you don't do what I want you to do, we'll just come at you with something else. There's a reason this property hasn't been developed over the years. There's more than one reason. The roads leading into this property, Gibbs Lane, Computer Lane, Cobb's Lane, there's a reason Sumner County calls them lanes because they're only one lane. It's not a road, it's a lane. We have an access, they'll have an access off of Dobbin's Pike. If you haven't drove out there and you don't drive this road, you've done the people disservice by voting for this. Get down to where they're talking about, the many citizens have talked about tonight, the Hatton Track extension. Well, it's terrible. I about got hit head-on turning right off of Dobbin's Pike on the 0109 two weeks ago on a Saturday morning, head-on. So, you know, I'm all for property rights. I've been following this through the city of Gallatin since they started it, to the best of my opinion. I've been following this property for over 10 years. We had this, this is where the industrial park was going, just like was mentioned earlier. Well, that flopped. So here we are with another proposal, something else to interrupt these people's lives. That's, it's just not right. So this property and property rights, I got through this commission, people's names put on rezonings and all that, so the people would know who their commissioners were. When people call me about a rezoning or anything like that, first thing I tell them, you get the neighbors on board with you, I got you 100%. But if the neighbors ain't on board with you, you don't have my support because we represent everybody. You can't develop property for the benefit of one at the detriment of everybody else. And that's exactly what this is. We don't, I mean, you want to talk about what we gained? We don't, I mean, you want to talk about what we gained from this, and people want to talk about having control. I don't want to control it. I just want it to be something that fits within the community. So let's talk about, go back to the roads for a second. The, uh, the railroad overcross. I dealt with railroads for 20 years. I talked to the mayor of Gallatin. She told me that the railroad held up the Gallatin Hatton Track extension by two years. That's her words, not mine. Two years. The railroad goes when the railroad wants to go. And if we don't have an agreement before us tonight, because you're gonna dump all that traffic out on Dobbin's Pike if you don't have a, a overcross around the railroad. One of the owners of Computer Lane said, he's selling his property. That's where the, the overpass has got to go. What we gonna do? Take it, eminent domain again? I mean, what are we gonna do? So we talked about the population of this, this property. 1,155 homes stuck out in the countryside. Folks, I drive over other counties. I see these out in other counties. I don't want that in Sumter County. You don't want it in Sumter County. You go around another windy crooked road, boom, there's a little town. There'll be more people in this development than lives in the city of Westmoreland, in, in the city of Westmoreland. More people. More cars, more kids. Mr. Chairman, what's our per pupil cost today? What's it cost us to educate a child in Sumter County? $10,000?
What's that? I'm sorry.
$10,000?
Roughly.
$10,000 times, well, we got, let's just, 2,200 more kids? And we get how many taxes out of this? It's won't be a drop in the bucket. Let me tell you what we gonna do to schools in that area. We talk about schools, and people think I ain't for schools because I don't vote for everything that comes in front of me. There's nothing further than the truth. Let's look at the schools. We don't have strong schools by overpopulating them. We overpopulate them by overdeveloping our land. That's the number-one way to negatively impact your schools is to overpopulate them.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, sir.
The majority of everything is wrong.
Yeah, let's move on, Mr. Taylor.
I am. Uh, let's see. Mini Bills, 87% capacity. Schaefer Middle School, 82% capacity. Gallatin High School, 101% capacity, assuming these kids would go to Gallatin. I mean, that, the, these numbers, I had to get this from emails, repeated, repeated, and repeated. Took forever to get it. That, that document right there should be given to every city-
One of the clarifications-
In the county.
Yeah, let, let's move on. This has nothing to do with the interlocal agreement, Mr. Taylor.
It has everything to do with it.
Let's move on.
It has everything to do with it. Okay, the interlocal agreement, is it legal?
Yes.
Even though the city of Gallatin is in default on previous annexations?
Ms. Dennen?
That's not part, that's not part of the question that we can ask.
What do you mean? We need to, do I need to move, do we move into executive session?
No, sir. The point I'm making is, if something has not been completed in another part, you can't take that as your, as your analysis with this.
You're not supposed to be able to move on to another one until you meet everything in the other.
I, I, I don't, I don't see it that way.
Okay, our law director is ruled. Mr. Taylor, please move on.
Okay. Well, the interlocal agreement, okay. So, you know, when this was an industrial park proposition, a lot of the people that were sitting here for this tonight, pushing it, were adamantly opposed against a rooftop community. Well, now it's a rooftop, gonna be a rooftop community. So, you know, think about what we're doing. You know, you might say it's just an interlocal agreement. That, that's all it is. It's just, we're just giving this land to, to the city of Gallatin. I asked Josh, I said, you reckon that we might get Robertson County, or Macon County, or somebody else to give us some land, to do whatever we want to with it?
Actually, Robertson County did. The White House High School football stadium's in Robertson County.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Um-
I don't know if we want any more from Robertson County, but we do have a little bit.
So, I mean, I just, you know, the reason I've, I've, I've thought this the whole way along is because of the people. I mean, it's for the people. That's who put me in my seat. The people that live in this area didn't put me in my seat. But, you know, you have to take all in consideration. And that, I mean, that's just why I'm adamantly opposed to it. You know, they, the property owner, you know, I don't speak ill of nobody. That's not my intent. But they knew what the zoning was of the property, when they bought it. They made frugal attempts to try to offload it to somebody. So, and I don't want to have to pay. We tuck our hands and stuck it in the pockets of citizens twice in less than five years in tax increases. This is your next. If it ain't the next one, it'll be the one after that. By overcrowding these schools and having to build more schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Mansfield, you're up next.
Chairman, I, I do also want to just reiterate, um, on what's on the agenda for the Meadows interlocal agreement. You know, I've, I've heard people say that it's not, we're just doing an interlocal agreement. I've also heard it said many times about this county commission that we've had foresight for planning and long-range planning, or et cetera, et cetera. But to try to limit this scope to just, this is just an interlocal agreement on a technicality of legal terms is grossly disingenuous, in my opinion, because it is not about an interlocal agreement. What we don't understand is, evidently some of us in these chambers, is that this is about approving, when we say yes to this interlocal agreement, it is rubber stamping this massive development that has a lot of problems with it, and is gonna have a negative impact on our community. And the problem is, it is a non-contiguous. When we say yes to this local agreement, we are allowing a non-contiguous annexation, which is called spot zoning. It is out of character. I've read the Gallatin's Move 2020 Plan, part of it in the 2035 Plan, and listened to citizens. This corridor is a rural corridor. It is not a high-density commercial center, which is what an interlocal agreement would allow infrastructure for, and it's a wrong thing to do. Now, this interlocal agreement would allow for spot zoning. The classic definition of spot zoning is the process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property into the detriment of other owners. This, this interlocal agreement is not to the benefit of the surrounding property owners, it's to the detriment of them for one person. And so, even according to the Gallatin News, two Gallatin city councilmen voted against the project when it came before them. And I've gone to several of the, the meetings in Gallatin. I came to the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting to speak out against this, because citizens requested I did. So I've gone to a lot of meetings on this, and I've listened a lot. But these two Gallatin city, um, councilmen said something I agree with. They said, we're approving development, and they're saying this to Gallatin. We're approving development after development inside the city right now that we've got to take care of, and then we'd have to hop and skip over everything in the county just to annex this. And that is a true statement. And that's what this interlocal agreement allows to happen. And it is a bad idea, a very bad idea. This is not just an interlocal agreement. You're approving a spot zoning, you're approving a, a, approximately a 1,200-home development that easily have 2,000 cars on the road. You're approving your next tax increase, in my opinion, and that's my opinion, like the senior commissioner from the first district said, if not this cycle, the next cycle, for, for schools that we, we're already maxed out of capacity according to the school enrollment charts provided by the Board of Education. I've seen that chart. And so, you know, we understand that land riders, landowners have a right to sell and a right to develop, but this, this land's already been rezoned. Before this interlocal agreement, I came up here, we were supposed to vote on that zoning resolution in, in March. The, the BZA, this came before the BZA, a week before that, and I asked the planning directors, if so, if the county commission approves the, the zoning resolution, the BZA can't approve this for duplexes. And he said, that's right. So that's why I went before we did that, that zoning resolution, so they could approve it for duplexes. So this is already approved for duplexes. And be honest with you, duplex is a lot better, because we don't have to have an interlocal agreement. You only have 310 duplexes. You've reduced half the population, half the burden on the city services, half the burden on cost and infrastructure to schools. So if, if the homeowner, the developer, or the landowner thinks she can develop for duplexes, go for it. She all can do .92 acres. County's zoning for one-acre lots, which I've heard the city of Henderson, the alderman say, there are no one-acre lots in this county. People want one-acre lots. So the Meadows is a prime area for one-acre lots in a rural setting that is more pastoral in nature, that is complementary to the neighbors. And it is not, basically, uh, to the detriment of the property owners. So they knew what the zoning was before they tried to buy it. You, you don't have a right to change the zoning. You definitely can do what you want with the property. So I, I'm all for the, the developer, the landowner to put houses on it. If she wants to put duplexes on it, fine, because it's less on the city services, and it's less impact to the neighbor, neighboring, uh, communities, so, um, but the Meadows interlocal agreement is a wrong thing to do, because it's not just about an interlocal agreement. You are opening Pandora's box of a lot of things that these citizens have been fighting for a year and a half. And so, uh, I, I implore you to vote no on this interlocal agreement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Uh, Mr. Driver?
I'll let you be next here. I am gonna speak to, uh, the interlocal agreement. There are several things that, um, disturb me about that. Uh, I, I think it's wrong in, as they are, as the city of Gallatin, they are jumping over areas to get to this area. And the whole reason that that's happening is, they don't want these areas in between. We have some subdivisions out there that are on the very kind of low end, housing-wise and all. Uh, when I've talked about fire hydrants and things before, there's two subdivisions, there are two roads right beside each other, one fire hydrant in the whole place. They do not have services from Gallatin, because they're not in the city. And I just can't see how we can jump over that and approve this without approving the in-between area too. And I know we can't add that tonight. I'm just saying, I don't think, uh, it is really right for us to be jumping over that property. They can do a continuous thing, uh, if they need to. I also want to make sure everybody understands. When, when we are approving stuff like this, this tactic is being used in other places in my district. Okay, there are people who are setting up subdivisions out there, um, and then asking Gallatin to annex them, so that they can build different properties and more properties on them. All right, and this particular area is in my district. Um, and so we just need to keep in mind that when we start, you know, allowing things like this, it's probably not the first time this is gonna come up. I know this is, project's been coming around for 10 years. I get that. But there are other situations there too, where houses are being built, they're needing the money, they're gonna annex. If, if the, and I'll say this too, if the county mission, commission was such a pushover on these developments, then they wouldn't be trying to go through the cities to get them done. Okay, I think we've been kind of accused of just, you know, doing whatever for these developers and all. And, and quite frankly, this is the opposite of that. This is showing that we have not been that way. And I will say one thing for the people out there in my district on Dobbin's Pike and all that. Uh, when, when I went out, for, during the last campaign, and talked to people all up and down Dobbin's Pike and all through there, they are very concerned about this. People across from it, up the road from it, down the road from it, whatever else. A lot of these people tonight that spoke, I spoke to them back then. And because they overwhelmingly asked me not to vote for that, I cannot vote for this interlocal agreement. I do feel for the people around it, and the people who are adjacent to it that do want it. But it was an overwhelming number of people that asked me not to vote for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Driver. Commissioner Ring?
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, let me, let me respond to some things that were said during, uh, during the public hearing, or, uh, for this, about this. One of the people would mention impact fees. We cannot raise impact fees. State will not allow us to do that. So we, we've been discussing that for several years. I've been on the commission. Just can't be done. Uh, mentioning of, of widening Dobbin's Pike. Dobbin's Pike is a state road. The city of Gallatin cannot widen Dobbin's Pike. It, we would, our legis, state legislators need to be involved in widening Dobbin's Pike. Somebody mentioned a moratorium on building, construction. I brought that up several years ago. We can't do that legally. Comment was made about three houses per acre, how horrible that is. Does anybody know what a city lot is? City lots are four houses per acre generally. So it's about the same number of houses as you're gonna find on a city lot, which is gonna be in the city. So just a couple of, just a couple of responses there. Uh, and I know this is the interlocal agreement. We're voting on whether or not to approve this. As a conservative, since that word's been used quite a bit, I believe strongly in property rights. She has a right to develop her property as it is currently zoned. Now, that means that if we do not approve this, she can put, the property owner who I've never met, don't know the woman, she can put duplexes like, on there like she's already planned for. I can't imagine that people would prefer to have 600 renter, rented homes in that same area. What's happening around the country is there are developers from the Northeast who are coming in and buying property around the country, where they can buy it cheaper than they can in the Northeast. They're doing, they're out-of-town investors. They're building duplexes, and they're renting them out. Those, a lot of those in cer, some of the areas around the country are deteriorating rapidly, because the property owner is basically, it's done it for tax purposes. Okay, that's all it's about, is tax purposes for them. They don't really care what the neighborhood looks like. So, you know, if we don't approve thi, this, uh, this subdivision, I think is the best use of this land as far as we've seen. I don't, I think in order for it to not be duplexes, in order for it to be a nice subdivision, I believe it's important that we pass the interlocal agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ring. Commissioner Wright?
We have four main arteries coming from the north into this county, south. Highway 31W, Highway 109, Highway 174, called Dobbin's Pike, and 31E. You're gonna put 1,200 homes on Dobbin's Pike. 1,200 ho, let that sink in, people. I have family members who drive that road every day. It's dangerous enough as it is. Traffic's horrible at times. If you drove up Dobbin's Pike between 6:30 and 7:30 on a school day, you know exactly what I'm talking about. It's not gonna affect anyone south of Dobbin's Pike. Traffic, y'all already have your problems south of Dobbin's Pike. Safety issues. I'm gonna touch on what Commissioner Driver talked about. You have certain neighborhoods up there, and I do say up there, because it is north of where we're sitting right now, that basically they're skipping over. They're bypassing it, and for a reason. They want the icing, but they don't want any of the cake. You can't have just icing, or you'll end up like me. Folks, I think you know where I stand on this issue. It's gonna be a safety matter whenever we have to answer calls. And I say "we" as a county agency. When we have to answer calls, it's gonna be a, a safety issue getting to those calls with all the extra traffic. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Becker?
Um, yes, I just, a couple, a couple of quick things. I, I agree with, um, the commissioner from District 3 who spoke over here about the non-continuous annexation piece of it. I, I don't, I know, I know, I guess back in 2014, the state made it legal to do that. I'm just, I, I personally don't. I, I don't see the, I don't know. I, I don't like the fact of, of, hey, let's just, let's not annex this piece of it, because we don't want that neighborhood, but let's go get this little, little island, I'll call it, as was referenced earlier. So I don't really care for that. But speaking of, you know, the interlocal agreement- But speaking of, you know, the interlocal agreement, you know, through my discussions with our, with Mr. Suddath and Ms. Judy Harden, you know, there were, there were a few things that, that were sort of brought up, that some concerns about the agreement that, you know, through the, through the negotiations back and forth of the terms of the agreement, I know that at least, you know, the county wanted the city to sort of take over the roads and meet more immediately after we approved the agreement versus the city, I guess ended up, you know, they'll, they'll take over the responsibility whenever they need to, like, I guess down the road. And so I didn't really care for that, not being more immediate. And then also, there were two items that, that the county asked the city to include on, and then the terms. And they're not, they are not, I'll admit, they are not directly related to, to the Meadows property. But I do think there are two items that I think would, would show a gesture of good faith from the City of Gallatin. And those items would pertain to Craft Street in front of the Sumner County Board of Education, as well as taking on full, the city taking on full maintenance of unnamed road from Albert Gallatin Road to intersection of Union School Road. Again, not directly related, so I completely understand. But to me, I see that as a lack of, of a gesture of good faith on their parts. That's, that's my opinion. And so all those things said, I will be voting against this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Foster.
Mr. Chairman, a call for the question.
Okay, it's been a call for the question. A yes vote is to end debate, and a no vote is to continue debate. So yes vote is to, I said, I need a second. Is there a second? Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconds? Sorry. I'll give Mr. Kemp just a second.
The call for the question is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Eighteen votes are entered.
It's all 23.
Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? With 16 affirmative votes, the question is approved.
Yeah, so I have voting, let me call out the no's, and then if you wanted to vote no, you can obviously change your vote. I have Commissioner Hyde, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Driver, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Kruger, Commissioner Mansfield, Commissioner Mo Taylor voting no. Does anybody else wish to vote no? Okay, so.
We are now back, if you want to do this on roll call, I think that would be easier.
You want to do a roll call? Sure, sure. We're going to do this on a roll call. I think that'll be easier and more transparent, more accurate, so we'll do it on a roll call.
All right, we are on the, the resolution that is in your packet on the annexation. Yes is to approve the resolution, no is to disapprove the resolution. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
No.
Wright.
No.
Gammenden.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Driver.
No.
Gray, Gray's at some. Foster.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Ring.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
DeWitt.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Echols.
No.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Hyde.
No.
Tucker.
Yes.
Becker.
No.
Chris Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Goode.
Yes.
Kruger.
No.
Langford.
Yes.
Mansfield.
No.
Guthrie.
No.
Nipper.
Yes, sir.
Fourteen in favor, nine against.
Okay, motion passes by a vote of fourteen to nine. All right, your certificates of recognition are on, we have, we had, if you remember, we haven't been able to gather everybody together for a couple of months and didn't want to bring them out now. A lot of our valedictorians and others and voyage winners are headed to college and or maybe still at home, but we have a whole bunch of certificates of recognition. Is there a motion to approve them? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I object to two of the certificates on, that's what that looks like in the record. I object.
Okay, hang on, hang on, Mr. Mansfield, let me, let me rule on the vote, and then I'll let you state your objection, if that's okay. Okay, so the motion passes. Are you voting yes or no on the?
If I have to vote, that's a whole other thing.
Okay, okay, what's your, what's your objection? Go ahead.
I'm objecting to the certificate for the governor and the county. Objection, yes.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Resolutions pass, and I believe, I know Commissioner Taylor, you got yours, you're good, okay. The others, we will mail to the recipients. I think we're, we're good on that. Okay, all right, I would like, before we move out of my report, in conversation with Ms. DeWitt, she has requested that the chair appoint an ad hoc committee for the Comer Barn. Now, obviously, based on what we decide tonight, we'll give guidance to what the next steps are for the Comer Barn ad hoc committee. So we will have to, she will have to work out what the scope of that is. Obviously, if we don't approve the, the 250,000 matching money, then it takes on a whole different shape of what we're going to do with the Comer Barn. If we do approve the 250,000 to match, then it takes on a different shape. Ms. DeWitt, I believe, has gathered input from people that wish to serve on the committee, and she's requested, and I will appoint as chair, Comer Barn ad hoc committee of Ms. Deanne DeWitt, Mr. Larry Hinton, Mr. Gene Rhodes, Mr. Luke Tinsley, Mr. Barry Young, Mr. Sean Fennell from the City of Gallatin, and Mr. Jonathan Hayes from the City of Hendersonville. And that will be our Comer Barn ad hoc committee, and they will, they will report back to us, and their report will go to the relevant committee, whether it's general ops or budget, based on what their determinations are. Sure, I've got Deanne DeWitt, Larry Hinton, Gene Rhodes, Luke Tinsley, Barry Young, Sean Fennell, and Jonathan Hayes. Okay, all right, consent agenda is before you. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Foster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sullivan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your written reports are on your desk. Is there a motion to approve our notaries?
Second.
I'm sorry, oh, Commissioner Rhodes with the motion, Commissioner Ring with the second. Hey, if y'all can help me out, if you make a motion, just stick your hand up. It's hard for me to, I'm hard of hearing as it is, and the masks make it hard for me to read lips, so, all right.
Notary applications are on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone, all 23 votes are entered. It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp. Notaries passed unanimously. All right, committee on committees, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a regular scheduled time, August 17, 2020, at 6:30. The matters at hand, which have been discussed for three to four, five months in a row, and everyone's received the emails, is tonight is the night that we reappoint a chairman and a pro tem, as well as standing committees. Mr. Chairman, without objection, can I do the regular monthly appointees by the county executive, and he come back to those?
What's that? I'm sorry, could you say?
So without objective, I'll do the agenda items from the county executive, come back to the committees?
Yes.
Okay, so in our regular scheduled business, Richard Crawford resigns his two-year term from the Airport Authority. County Executive recommended Matt Harris, and it was unanimous, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner DeWitt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Civil Service Board, William Mulley, two-year term, that was reappointed by the county executive to, for another two-year term, and it was unanimous, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode. Okay, please note that Mr. Guthrie abstained from that vote. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Okay, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I come back to the business at hand that we have do every, at the same time every year. The first thing to do is a reappoint or nominate, appoint, I'm sorry, candidates for chairman of the county commission. And I reappoint Chairman Langford, I make a motion to reappoint Chairman Langford in the, to be chairman.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. Are there, I'll take the nominations, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kemp to do the election. Any other nominations for chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
Jerry Becker.
Okay, Mr. Jerry Becker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mansfield. Any other nominations for chair? All right, this time nominations will cease, and I'm going to let Mr. Kemp do a roll call to do the vote for chair.
All right, we're, we're going to do this by roll call. You will either vote Langford or Becker when your name is called. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Becker.
Wright.
Becker.
Gammenden.
Langford.
Hinton.
Langford.
Driver.
Langford.
Foster.
Langford.
Shell.
Langford.
Ring.
Langford.
Sullivan.
Langford.
DeWitt.
Langford.
Tinsley.
Langford.
Echols.
Langford.
Rhodes.
Langford.
Hyde.
Becker.
Gammenden.
Langford.
Hinton.
Langford.
Driver.
Langford.
Foster.
Langford.
Shell.
Langford.
Ring.
Langford.
Sullivan.
Langford.
DeWitt.
Langford.
Tinsley.
Langford.
Echols.
Langford.
Rhodes.
Langford.
Hyde.
Becker.
Gammenden.
Langford.
Hinton.
Langford.
Driver.
Becker.
Foster.
Langford.
Shell.
Langford.
Ring.
Langford.
Sullivan.
Ring.
DeWitt.
Mr. Ring, I'd like you to.
She referred to Ring.
Ring. Tinsley.
Ring.
Echols.
Ring.
Rhodes.
Ring.
Hyde.
Becker.
Tucker.
Ring.
Becker. Chris Taylor.
Becker.
Goode.
Ring.
Kruger.
Ring.
Langford.
Becker.
Mansfield.
Becker.
Guthrie.
Nipper.
With 18 votes, you're reelected, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. And as always, it's a, it's an honor to serve, and I appreciate it and take it very seriously. So I won't drone on because I know it's late, and everybody wants to, wants to move on, but I really do appreciate everyone and appreciate the work that each of you do on the commission. So thank you for the opportunity to continue serving. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now's the time, Mr. Chairman, to open up the floor for nominations for Chairman Pro Tem.
Mr. Taylor.
Nominate Mr. Becker.
Okay, Commissioner Jerry Becker nominated for Pro Tem. Commissioner Rhodes, is that a second? Okay, all right, is there any, are there any other nominations? Commissioner Tinsley.
I need to nominate Mr. Becker and Ring.
Okay, Commissioner Baker Ring, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. Any other nominations for vice chair? All right, seeing none, we will, we will move to a vote.
Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Becker.
Wright.
Becker.
Gammenden.
Ring.
Hinton.
Hinton.
Okay, Commissioner Baker Ring, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. Any other nominations for vice chair? All right, seeing none, we will, we will move to a vote.
Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Becker.
Wright.
Becker.
Gammenden.
Ring.
Hinton.
Look, guy right over there, I can't face this name. You want to see me point? Right. One more laugh.
Ring.
You're either, you're voting for Commissioner Becker or Commissioner Ring.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Hinton passes. Ring, ring. Thank you, Commissioner Hinton.
You're welcome.
Driver.
Becker.
Foster.
Ring.
Shell.
Ring.
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 Sullivan.
Ring.
DeWitt.
Becker.
Tinsley.
I'm Baker Ring.
Echols.
Ring.
Rhodes.
Ring.
Hyde.
Becker.
Tucker.
Ring.
Becker. Chris Taylor.
Becker, sir.
Goode.
Ring.
Kruger.
Ring.
Langford.
Becker.
Mansfield.
Becker.
Guthrie.
Becker.
Nipper.
Becker.
Anyone not, anyone wishing, well, all right, we have Ring with 12 votes, Becker with 11 votes. We do not have an election.
Okay.
Mr. Ring.
All right, let's, let's roll call again.
What was the total that time? All right, committee, 12. Commissioner Becker had 11 votes, Commissioner Ring had 12 votes.
Okay.
Nobody got 13.
Got to have 13, even though we're down one commissioner tonight. Okay, let's do it again.
Second roll call. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Becker.
Wright.
Becker.
Gammenden.
Ring.
Hinton.
Ring.
Driver.
Becker.
Foster.
Becker.
Shell.
Langford.
Ring.
Langford.
Sullivan.
Ring.
DeWitt. Commissioner Mo Taylor. Wright. Gammenden. Hinton. Driver. Foster. Shale.
Ring.
Ring. Sullivan. DeWitt.
She voted for Ring.
Tinsley. Echols. Rhodes. Hyde. Tucker. Becker. Chris Taylor. Goode.
Ring.
Kruger. Langford.
Becker.
Mansfield. Guthrie. Nipper. Thirteen votes Ring, ten votes Becker.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Ring. You will be Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Becker, for your service over the previous year. All right, let's see. Mr. Goode, anything else?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, we also tonight, as everyone is aware from the traditional way since 2014 of sending in your recommendations and likes for committees, we did committee on committees, and, and Ms. Chairman, two things. This, this, this recommendation from committee on committees will continue the pattern we've had of having probably about ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of people getting what they requested. But what we decided this year is, we had committees this past, the law director and I have talked about this, the county mayor and I have talked about this, and we had committees this year due to COVID and other reasons that maybe have only met, in some cases, two times. Not counting some that might have met by Zoom, which is very limited to that as well. It was the feeling that to make matters easier with everything that we're going through and how well this year actually went with all things considered, is to renominate the standing committees as we have them for this past year currently. And we talked about that in committees on committees, and it was unanimous to do that for this coming year, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Goode.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hinton. Yes, sir. Okay, what's your objection, Mr. Taylor? Can you hit your mic, Mr. Taylor? You're on, you're good.
The, the previous slate of committees didn't have equal representation from all parts of the county. That's not what makes up a county body, or twelve different districts, not having representation from all parts of the county. So that's my objection.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, I've got, if you could hold your hands up if you're no, I've got Commissioner Mo Taylor, Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield as a no, so it gives us two nos and twenty-one affirmatives. Motion passes. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and Ms. Chairman, from talking to the law director and so forth, the thought was that we will not do with COVID and everything, we will not do the traditional huddles here on the floor and come up with chairs and co-chairs. What each committee will do when they next meet in person, the standing chairman right now will remain chairman and vice chairman when we all meet in person with whatever standing committee that is. The first item on the agenda will pick a chair and a vice chair, that's number one, and as always stated, like we did last year and every year before, if you're on a committee that you do not want to sit on, you can just let committee on committees know and we'll address that next month or the following. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. I would ask if we could, for our chairpersons, if they could, as you get new chairpersons, if you could, when we have our September meeting, if we could, when you do your report, if you could announce who the, or if you want, if you can just send it to, send it to me, then we can, as you made, then we can send that out to the body, so we'll know exactly who our new chair, chairs and vice chairs are. That would be helpful. Yes, Ms. Ring. Okay, then the, then the active chair would say, right, we'll just get them done as quickly as we can. All right, let's see, education and Mr. Sullivan.
Dr. Phillips gave us a good update on current situation, getting back to school, TWSA, the rulings and so forth, and just want to commend him and the, the staff and the school board for making some really tough decisions, and it's been a great start to the school year, and we appreciate his update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and believe it or not, we're going to play football on Friday night, which is going to be interesting. But we're excited for the, for the kids, marching band and everyone that's been working so hard, our kids and teachers have really done great, so thank you, Mr. Sullivan, I'll, I'll pass along your report. Highway Commission, Mr. Hinton. Okay, General Ops, Michelle. Emergency Services, Ms. Kruger.
Everything from emergency services has already gone through budget, and Chris Taylor representing that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kruger. Financial Management, Mr. Becker. Okay, thank you. Legislative Committee, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir, thank you. Two zero zero eight dash zero four, authorizing the mayor of Sumner County to sign a proposal with Tennessee Department of Transportation for State Project Road Part Two, Road Improvement Project. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring. Need a second. Second by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Is this going to have any financial implications on us?
Can you hit your, can you hit your microphone, Lee?
This is just part two of which I passed last month. It's the continuation on, we just have to sign off for the state.
All right, see no one else in the queue? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Leave it alone, Mr. Beck, Mr. Kemp, see, there we go. All right, two thousand eight dash oh five, appropriating increase of up to thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents from county general and assigned fund balance for emergency management agency salaries. There were two part-time employees that Director Widener had hired on to help them through the COVID. Obviously, we were kind of hoping that would run its course at this point, it has not. He's asked that we continue to keep those employees for him, and this would put them through, and obviously, if it resolves itself soon, that they'll be, their employment will be terminated and the rest of the money will be returned back to county general. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Second by Commissioner Nipper. I see no one in the queue. All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. Two thousand eight dash oh six, appropriating twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents as carryover fiscal year 2020 funds to the Sumner County Volunteer Fire Departments. What this is, is some of the money in, obviously, I'm going to address number oh seven, which is the one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. They were given additional monies last year to fund. They had worked out amongst themselves what that would be for. One of them, it was, New Shackel was hoping to get a generator at the time. They were going to try and set it up as a secondary generator, a secondary power site for if they needed to run ventilators or things like that, if there was an emergency with the hospital. They underestimated how expensive that would be to find the appropriate generator. Because of that, they didn't use the money that was decided on, so it came back. The twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents is carryover from the normal part, and some of that, again, is, we haven't gotten into the ones that didn't have their 501(c) done, and they're, they're working on that, but this is just some of the money that wasn't spent. We want to make sure they still have the ability to spend it, and this is just the twelve thousand one first. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. I see no one in the queue. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
Two thousand eight dash oh seven, this is the second half of that, is transferring one hundred and thirty-eight thousand for distribution of fiscal year 2021 funds to the Sumner County Volunteer Fire Department. They're going to get back together, they're going to decide the best way to spend that money like they did originally with it, run that through emergency services for approval, and then it'll come back up for us to approve a final time. I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Taylor.
All right, this one might take a minute. Two thousand eight dash oh eight, authorizing a plan for Comer Barn preservation and appropriating five hundred thousand consisting of two hundred and fifty thousand matching funds to be paid from the hospital sale proceeds designation, accepting and appropriating the two hundred and fifty thousand state of Tennessee endowment and other costs to be paid by donations and tourism funds collected to preserve the facility. I so move, and I would ask Ms. DeWitt to do a presentation to start this, so that might clear up some of the questions that people have.
Okay, Commissioner Chris Taylor with the motion, Commissioner Foster with the second. I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. DeWitt, and then we'll go to our queue. Mr. Kemp, should I turn mine off or leave it alone?
Talk for a few minutes, I'm going to try not to go on too much, but I do think there's a lot that should be shared. I think, you know, I, I think that there is a lot of support for saving this barn throughout all of the county. I think there's a lot of support in this room. Obviously, how we do that is a debatable point, so rather than rushing through to a vote, I just want to pause and share with you so that, for full transparency, everyone knows what I know about the agreement and the proposal that we have tonight. I'm wearing my party dress tonight for two reasons. One, because I'm hoping to have something to celebrate, because I have been working really hard on this project, but secondly, I wanted to just share a little bit of connection to this. I bought this dress, there was a fundraiser at Mont Haven back in January, and Mont Haven, if you haven't been, please take an effort to go, it's a, it's an awesome amenity for our community, and Mont Haven is relevant to the Comer Barn for a couple of reasons. One, Mont Haven was named by Mont Comer, brother to Guy Comer. It was his haven, so he called it Mont Haven, and ultimately, that beautiful building was given to the city, given to a government, and with private funds and support from the, the government, that was restored, it was given initially to the Arts Council, and then ultimately to Mont Haven, and they run a beautiful program there. So similar to what we are looking at with the Comer Barn, there's just a relevance and a connection, and it was a good use to wear the dress again, because otherwise I probably would never wear it. So, in any case. It was, it was a great party, I have to tell you. I'll tell you the rest of the story later if you want, because it, the dress fit, I promise. I know it doesn't necessarily fit tonight, but, like I said. So I know that everyone would agree that this barn is impeccably central to our population base. I know it's not central to a lot of the outlying areas, but when you look at the density of the population of our county between Hendersonville and Gallatin, it is very central. It would make a great early voting location, and we'll talk about that a little bit more later. It's extremely accessible to those outside of our community because of the highway and the proximity there. Now, my friend Bill Perrier, I'm going to tell, talk about him a couple of times tonight, because it's his fault that I'm in this mess, and he is a sage of Sumner County, if you ever have a chance to listen to him, like his son John Perrier, who spoke earlier tonight. They are extremely eloquent and knowledgeable about the history. So Bill will explain to me a, a different reason why the centrality of this barn is so important, and it connects to what John was talking about with the horse industry, and I, I don't think many people really understand how in the eighteen hundreds, you know, ultimately tobacco was, has been a, a big commodity of our state, but land speculation and horses were, were the, the main thing, and they were in Sumner, they were in Tennessee, and they were essentially, Sumner County was extremely well-known for generating these great horses. We, we had this great bluegrass, we had the, it was grown in the limestone soil, John talked about the phosphorus, so we had the strongest, the fastest, the winningest horses, and so those horses were the quarter horses and the thoroughbreds, and there's just a very rich history when you go back to the eighteen hundreds for all the races, and then the fox hunts and the steeplechase, and then to the point of why it's central and why that's relevant, is that, you know, Sum, Sumner County, believe it or not, in the eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds, was a social hotspot, and there were people coming by rail, by car, and by boat, from New York, from Boston, from across the pond, to see these races. And, and they, they would come, and there is nothing like the convergence of those modes of transportation like you have just within a half mile of the Comer Barn. So if you can picture where the barn is, just to the west of that, the railroad is, kind of dips down, Nashville Pike comes through, the Cumberland River takes a big dip up, and so that, in Bill Perrier's much more eloquently put history, is why it's such a central facet of our county and something that connects it to the importance of preserving this, this building with all this charm and character. Now, I know there's a lot of controversy. I also know that there's a lot of misinformation out there, and so that's part of what I want to dispel. I know there's a lot of faults with the original deed, a lot of those were brought up tonight, and those have been addressed. I know they've been addressed partially in the MOU, and I'll talk some more about some additional points. I've heard it said many times that the county's going to spend millions of dollars on this, and that's not the proposal, is distinctly not the proposal. We are really just looking to match the, the state grant with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our, our county funds, and, and beyond that, I genuinely propose that we are looking for grants for private donations and for other ways of funding it. Lastly, there's been a lot of talk about making it into an event center, and that idea has continued to promote itself. I'm really thankful that Chef Christopher and Mark Bagsby, I, I hope, because I've reached out to both of them, and I've talked with Chef Christopher, should let him know, there is no interest at this juncture in creating an event center. We have plenty of those in the county, we do not need to be competing with our business partners that are here, and so that is off the table, and just as one kind of additional level of assurance, I have a letter that I received yesterday from Barry Young. He is our tourism director, and he said just a couple of things. He said, "Deanne, please let the commission know that I fully support your plan to save the Comer Barn and transform it into an attractive destination for visitors and Sumner County residents alike." He goes on to say, "We are not interested," in very clear words, "we are not interested in seeing the Comer Barn being used as a multipurpose event center." So I just want to make that as clear as possible. Now, I did have a fancy presentation, I'd love to have shared with you some pictures of the barn, but we can't tonight. So I just want to assure you that, you know, it was mentioned, Mr. Miller mentioned that he saw the barn, he was there with me last week, and it, it did really change his perspective on why it was so important, because it is in great shape. Ms. Juvent's a wonderful offer, but I cannot possibly imagine how we could move this barn. It is built with limestone between boards that are permanent. I, I just have no idea how it could possibly be moved. It is very sturdy, though. The limestone construction of the sides of this barn are, are in very good shape. The top line roof is in great shape. A lot of the trim work is in great shape, a lot, most, all of the trusses are in really good shape, and then there's, of course, all the beautiful stalls and all the wood there that is just precious. So I would like to mention that, but on the flip side, the reason we're talking about this today is because we can't wait long enough to determine how we will use it, because the roof is highly compromised, and I would love to have shared with you a couple of pictures to show you the comparison. In just four months' time, the one section of roof that goes over, goes over the, the area of roof that goes over the stalls would be referred to as the sheds, and those areas are the most compromised, and there's one that's large and has grown, probably doubled or nearly doubled in just a few months' time. On the top line of the roof, there's very little damage, but there's one area, and it has grown again substantially since the first time Mr. Gammenden took me there. So I know we just don't have the time to do it right, to know what we're going to do with it before we decide to invest in saving it. Let's see, fancy pictures you can't see, let me moving on, and then I had a great video that I took Thursday night, not great, it was sad, because I was standing there inside the barn and it, there was a huge downpour, and so I could, could have shared with you the video to, to see that the roof is highly compromised. And there were a lot of people that offered to come and speak tonight. I said, "In the interest of time, I know there are going to be a lot of people here to speak with public comment," so I gathered some different input. One, I asked Barry to just make sure it was clear to everybody involved, right, that he's not looking for an event center. Another person who was willing to come up from Nashville and spend all night with us, his name's Dan Brown, and he works with the Tennessee State Historic Commission, and he said a few things to me that I just think are really important to keep in mind. First, as he stood inside the barn with Mr. Gammenden and I back in, I don't know, I think it was February, maybe, does that sound about right? He said, in a very passionate tone, "Please, please stop the bleeding. This barn is precious, it's an invaluable cultural resource, but if you don't do something about the roof, you're not going to be able to save it." The other thing that I think is just particularly interesting for me, and trying to make sense out of all the facts and things that are going on about this barn, is that as a person from the Historic Commission, his preference would be to see this barn beyond the historic register. Through that, he could help facilitate, you know, at least applying for different grants, and I realize that that would be valuable to us. I think there's other avenues. And what was so valuable to me was that Dan Brown said that regardless of the status of this barn, it doesn't matter if it's on the historic register. It is historically relevant, it is absolutely worth saving, but we don't need to have it on the historic register to do that. So I think, coming from somebody in his position, that was really helpful. Another thing, and I could use some water. Does anybody have any water? No. Maybe, can I take this off? Would you guys be okay with that? I'm talking a lot and I'm hyperventilating. What's that? Do I have anything in there? Thank you. That was the intermission. That was the intermission. I'm about halfway there, I promise. The last thing that Dan Brown mentioned to me in our dialogue over the last several months is that he is very familiar, became very familiar with the deed and the arrangement with Rogers Group, and he said it more than once, that Rogers Group has been a great corporate citizen and a great partner on this endeavor, and so he was really grateful for their gift to the barn in the beginning and their ongoing willingness to continue partnering with us. So since I got involved with this project back in December, two key things that I've really been working on. One is establishing an ongoing dialogue with Rogers Group, coming to some agreement on this memorandum of understanding, which, again, I know it doesn't hit all the points, but the key things that are in there that I want to make sure we realize. One, the reverter language is, is going away. Two, they are very interested in helping us with the restoration. They've done a lot already, but they want to provide all the stone and paving to build a parking lot. That's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution that they've committed to. They have agreed to what, I'll just call it repurchase arrangement, so that if the county at this point in time does nothing more than spends two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to match the state grant, and we get a new roof on it, but between now and 2027, if we can do nothing else with it, they will repurchase it from us. And so these funds that I'm suggesting we spend are protected with that arrangement with Rogers Group. So I have one other thing, you know, I would just say that I've, I've found them to be a great partner in this. This arrangement with Rogers Group is always going to be complicated. They operate a quarry, they have a very complicated permitting and regulation process, and so is, is the tension there is around their permitting, that tension just applies to this deed and arrangement that we're going to have with Rogers Group. But I am a hundred percent certain through everything that they genuinely want to see this barn become an asset for the county. I asked Brian Ledford, who is the VP of Rogers Group, if he could help me address some of the things that have been really... some of the things that have been really particularly contentious in the last week or so, a lot of the things that I've heard and complaints about how this MOU doesn't really get us to where we need to go. So I'm going to read you, I got this letter this morning from Brian Ledford. It's from Rogers Group. I'll give you a copy in just a second. "Sumner County Commissioners, I know you will be considering a resolution to make an investment..." You're such a saint. Thank you. All right. "I know that you will be considering a resolution to make an investment in the Stone Barn adjacent to the Sumner County Tourism Offices. Rogers Group is happy to gift the barn to the county several years ago with an expectation it will be restored and become a valuable asset for Sumner County. While the memorandum of understanding clarifies our expectations going forward, a couple items worth emphasizing. One, we look forward to removing the reverter language in a reformation deed and we have no desire to dictate specific renovations be deemed, quote unquote, 'reasonably satisfactory' to our liking. We expect to renew the land lease on intervals concurrent with our conditional use permit and the Hendersonville Planning Commission. There's no need for a 60-day termination clause." So those two points are referring to the lease for the 17 acres surrounding the barn property. So again, that we, they're asking that we adjust the land lease so that we renew it on intervals concurrent with their conditional use permit. So like right now, that lease reads that we haven't until 2027 and then it renews annually. And then it also says that there's a 60-day cancellation clause and so, or termination clause. So both of those items are, they're very happy to address. Point three, we are happy to provide all the stone and paving for a large parking lot to accommodate the facility. And lastly, we have no desire to reclaim ownership of the barn so long as good faith efforts are made to initially preserve the structure with a new roof and ultimately restore the structure for use by the community. We look forward to continuing our partnership on this special part of Sumner County history." So if you want to...
Do it. Can you put your mask back on? Sorry.
You're right. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You want me to put it up?
You're fine. You're fine. Yeah, if you don't mind. If you're good.
Sorry. I really do apologize. I promise I'm a very healthy person. I go to the hospital twice a week right now with my little wound vac here. So I am checked and rechecked and rechecked. Okay. The second thing I've been working on, in addition to getting this agreement with Rogers Group nailed down so that we remove as many of the issues as there are, is to work on creating a fundraising strategy. So rather than creating a 501(c)(3), I have a charitable partner that will accept charitable contributions that are 501(c)(3), so donations can be routed through that. I'm looking into a variety of grants. We've got the Memorial Foundation locally and I hope to speak with them soon. I've been looking, depending on the usage, we might be pursuing things like arts or humanities or maybe agricultural type of grants. I also talked with Kim Norfleet for quite a while. We were looking at a really large federal economic development grant. We didn't compete for that well because of the size and scope, but distinctly, they looked at that and our regional federal EDA counterpart looked at this project and said, "This would definitely qualify. There's a lot of economic benefit to a project of this nature, just not quite big enough to qualify for the federal grant." I do have a check. It was a small GoFundMe. I have a couple of thousand dollars in addition to what was raised online that have been given to me offline. So I'll be making a check to the county for those funds. It was done instead of having a gathering. I have a committee of supporters that wanted to help do an event in the fall and invite the community out to the barn and it's just obviously not very good timing for gathering. Two last points as far as fundraising. I do think that there's a lot of gift and kind donations in addition to the parking lot, the professional services that we'll need, whether it be surveying or engineering, architecture, maintenance, between, we have Richard Jones, who's in our planning department. I've spoken with him about this project. And then when you look to the schools, we have quite a few other professionals there. So I will certainly be asking every one of those agencies or those opportunities to help invest in this project to minimize our cost. And then lastly, I'm just going to put this up here because some people know Bill Perrier. This is the gentleman who brought me this whole thing. He's an artist in his program and he did a new original piece of artwork. And so he has, he has done an original piece of artwork. And that artwork he's given to us to do fundraising with a very limited run of his prints. And his prints tend to go for a lot of money, so I'm really excited about that. I know a lot of people will be excited to contribute to this project and purchase one of his prints. So I've got a lot of things moving as far as fundraising. Just a couple more points. We're getting there. Almost there. Okay. So you know that the current deed has the barn. The reformation deed that we proposed will include a permanent easement access. The lease that we currently have has the 17 acres surrounding the barn and the tourism offices. They have, Rogers Group has offered to provide the parking lot. They gave us a sketch and I do think that's in your packet. There's a sketch of the parking, isn't in there? Okay. Yep. And if you don't know, just as far as this project, since the life of this whole project, they have spent at least $120,000 between restoring the mansion, putting in the temporary drive and then putting a fence around all that property. So Rogers Group has already done a lot. They gave us, they gave us the barn. They've spent a lot of money. I know they're a wealthy and very successful company, but they've been great partners and they intend to do a lot more. All right. Getting there. All right. So now we're just, strictly a question of matching that state grant to preserve the structure, put on a new roof. Thank you Chairman Langford for, I don't know if we want to call it a Comer Barn ad hoc or a Historic Commission. I don't know if we have a choice to think about exactly how we want to structure that, but the last pretty slide I had to show you was a variety of different inspiration pictures. So as much as we don't know what it's going to be used for, I know that question comes up over and over and over again. And so I, you know, I've made it as clear as I can that it's, it's not going to be, the things that I know best are what it's not going to be used for. And that's one, an event center, as everyone already talked about. And we do not need another historic destination. We don't need somewhere just to go see another old building or an old barn. In my point of view, that if we move this project forward, you know, how are we going to use it? I wrote an article in the newspaper and I don't think it got, I don't think this part of it got in there, but the way I think of it is that, given this opportunity, you know, to figure out what we're going to do with it, that is the million-dollar question and that really beckons all the great visionary idea generators to come and partner with us to work that out. So we can't determine a use if we don't save it. The pretty picture I had, had a few different options. Mr. Miller mentioned Quincy Market. Harlinsdale is a barn, very similar to ours down in Franklin. The Stable Cafe at Biltmore is a, is a really cool, similar-looking venue when you think of the stalls. The Wilson County Fairgrounds have been mentioned a number of times. I'm going to take a sip. I've gotten high blood pressure to go with this wound vac. It's just, it's crazy. Okay. I can, I can think again. So I have received a couple of different proposals. I've seen, received a lot of ideas and I have probably had dozens, if not hundreds, of calls and texts and emails since my different articles and things have gone out. So I know there, you didn't see or hear a lot of it in your own inboxes. You didn't see a lot of it or hear of it tonight. I've put myself out there a lot with this project and so a lot of it's just coming straight back to me. A lot of impassioned seniors who, you know, have lived here and grown up here, who are really grateful. So here's some of the things that I've heard that I think are worth sharing. We don't know what it's going to be used for, but let's dream together, right? So two pretty detailed proposals. One around doing a craft center where artisans could inhabit those stalls and make and sell their craft. And then they could have an outlet or a connection to Sumner Schools and the art students. Another proposal is around a family-friendly culinary estate with multiple food vendors and a kind of a swanky bar on the backside with a lot of family-friendly space outside and around the barn. And they're having a venue for live music and inviting students who want to be in the performing arts or, or music, give them a venue for performing. I've talked with Dicky Reese. I've talked with Dicky about possibly doing mule sales at the barn. I've heard from a lot of horse enthusiasts about doing different kind of equine activities there. I have talked about fairs and festivals with those in the agriculture side of things. I've talked with the schools about ways that they could get involved with the maintenance and expand their CTE offering for things like 4H and FFA with a barn or a facility like this. I'd say the last thing I just really want to emphasize is that I talked with Ms. Ashley over the weekend, our election commissioner. She would really love for this to be an early voting location. It would be so well-positioned. And so I definitely think as, as we consider the county's interests, that's probably the most important, at least immediately. So you have the state grant. We're asking for the $250,000 match of the hospital fund. It is all taxpayer money. I do, I'm not going to argue that point, but it is a savings account. It is a separate fund. It is not going to impact taxes. And it is just this $250,000. And just let me reiterate that that money is being protected with the way that the repurchase agreement is structured. It will be structured in the new deed. So obviously I believe this is a really worthy investment. I've, between the calls and the emails, the GoFundMe, I know there are sent a ton of money out there, but there are a lot of people who voiced their support. Trish Lamar, by the way, I talked with her and she sends her love and greetings and she said, "Vote for it." So I guess maybe that should just be enough. I know a lot of you respect her. I think that's about all I have to say. So thank you for the time. Thank you for...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whit.
Can I ask Mr. Whit some questions before she leaves?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yes. That'll be fine. Let's try to remember though, what's on topic tonight is, is the $250,000. So I would encourage everybody, we're kind of far afield right now, let's kind of tighten back up and think about the motion that's on the floor, which is the $250,000 to match. So let's try to focus there. Go ahead, Mr. Foster.
Mr. Whit, the, with this memo... Is it my, is it, am I understanding it correctly that at some point Rogers Group will deed the entire property to us? And if that's true, what is the timing on that? Do we have to spend the $250,000 first with the, matching 250 and then the, then the deed will be, be due to us? Will it be due to us?
I think that's a more appropriate, let's go to the law director on that. I know Mr. Whit knows the answer, but let's go to the law director.
I mean, we'll be able to work the deed out just as soon as we can get it together.
But there is no expectation that they are going to give us that property surrounding it? No.
Right. No, no. And not the 17 acres, but the barn with the reverter removed and then an additional easement that will be for driveway.
Just the five feet around the barn itself.
Correct. That's, the reformation deed will include the barn, the five feet around it and the permanent easement access drive. The lease will, will address that 17 acres and that lease, the terms on the lease renewal right now are not very good. And so part of that is fixing it and that's what the one bullet point is referring to.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Does anyone else have a question? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whit. We really appreciate your work on this. Thank you for, for your devotion to the project. Commissioner Mansfield, you're up next in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, the written minutes of the commission are kind of what's the official record, correct?
Sure.
Okay. So back in January, Minute Book 22, January 27th to 2020, there was a motion made. I'm going to read the motion from, directly from the minutes. It said, "Commissioner Hinton moved, seconded by Commissioner Mansfield, to table the resolution until the following items are resolved by the Budget Committee." There's three, three things. There was a unanimous vote that night, 23 yeses, zero no's, zeros abstentions. First item was to set the parameters and publish procedures for solicitation of private funds. That has not been done. Second thing that we voted on that night, that needed to be resolved before it came back to this commission was, the commission is to clarify its intended use of the Comer Barn and the breadth of the project. That, we don't even, we, the second bullet point, we have not clarified intended use. We don't know have a business plan. We don't know what we're going to do with it. We don't have a projection on income or what is the return on our investment, or even the costly, the yearly maintenance, to maintain it, the cost of that. The third point is, is really the, to me, the most egregious one. The Rogers Group put in writing what it is willing to do and the documents be presented to the public in its entirety. And that means the deed, that means the lease.
I want a clarification, sir. I'll answer that specific question. The words, it's written in the resolution.
Hang on, hang on. Hang on. Hang on, hang on. Let me, let me let Mr. Mansfield finish and then we'll, go ahead, Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, sir. It is not addressed in this thing because this memorandum of understanding says it may not contain all the terms that would be included in the final documents proposed herein. This memorandum of understanding does not meet the spirit of what we voted on as a commission, that the documents be presented to the public in its entirety. We do not have a new deed and a new lease for us to read, look over, and just like we had before after the county executive came in and executed a deed and a lease and brought it to the commission saying he has done so. So those items haven't been fulfilled at all.
Okay, Mr. Mansfield, this is a new resolution.
And, okay, so...
So the, the resolution that you moved to table remains tabled. This is a new resolution that's come through budget and come to the floor.
Well, it was, before it came back to the floor, this says it's supposed to resolve these items by the budget.
Right. And that resolution remains tabled. This is a new resolution.
Well, this new resolution doesn't resolve anything.
It doesn't matter, Mr. Mansfield. That resolution that you're referring to remains tabled. This is a new resolution.
Okay. I guess the new resolution is, is worse than the, the old one then, in my opinion, because it doesn't deal with any of these issues. So here's another problem, is, you know, we've been told a lot of things. This project has gone a long, a lot, through a lot of different trails. And one thing that is a problem, starting last June, was that we had $3.5 million in the budget that nobody really even knew about that got pulled out last June. And so to say that we're not going to spend millions of dollars on this, but then we're going to use it as a voting center...
Mr. Mansfield, there's, there's nothing in here, there's nothing in here in this resolution. The resolution is about the $250,000 to match. Please, please stay on topic.
Well, I'm staying on the topic of the speaker who presented and said that we're not going to spend millions of dollars, but yet we're going to have a voting center. Who's going to pay for that? Charity? For millions of dollars to renovate for a voting center?
The speaker is not the resolution. So focus on the resolution, please.
So, fine, I'll focus on the resolution on, I'll start with one point here. Says safeguarding it from the elements as well as human and animal intervention is the goal of this body. We've had this thing for four and a half years. We didn't put a tarp on it. Why? You could have easily stopped a lot of these problems with the tarp. Why didn't, I obtained a quote for $60,000 from a local licensed contractor roofing company. If our goal is to safeguard it from the elements and that's the goal of everything, we've got, already got a quote for 60 grand to do this. So another thing, you know, a big problem of this is I have is, and the citizens have asked this question regarding this resolution. You know, we should ask ourselves as a body, is it right that a quarter of a million taxpayer dollars from the hospital fund and a quarter of a million taxpayer dollars from the state is being used to fund a venture on 17 acres that we don't own by, for private property owned by half a billion to a billion-dollar corporation? Is it right for us to use taxpayer dollars? And I haven't heard a single taxpayer say, "Yes, it's right for us to do that," at all. A lot of people agree on the sentimentality of the barn. I've heard statements saying it's cool or I just don't want to see that old barn fall down because I drove past it for 60 years. You know, those aren't logical, sound fiduciary answers on this type of project. So, and the problem I have with this resolution in saying, "Hey, trust us because they're, we're going to work out a deal with Rogers," even though I understand what we tabled in January, we didn't meet any of those obligations and I'm just supposed to trust you guys and the citizens are, but we were told from November last year from this floor that we had to complete this by March of 2020 because that's what the FNA grant said. And that was in fact actually incorrect. That applied to non-governmental entities, period. We also found that stated this is a one-for-one matching grant. I emailed the state representative from this area as well as, and he obtained information from the Office of Finance and Administration, saying it is not a one-for-one grant, it's just a matching grant with some funds. So technically, in the spirit of the law, we could take what the junior commissioner from the sixth district has done through a GoFundMe account and apply that as a matching grant. And that would meet the letter of the law, because what is written is what is the letter of the law. So technically, and I understand the senator wrote a letter that we have in here saying that it was his intent, eight months after we got the money on August 12th when the contract was executed.
... because we've been told by the legislature and other people that has spoken with Senator, that he had expected us to match it.
I have emails from his office saying.
I posted the actual entire email.
I'm sorry?
I said the entire email. Jay, if you could provide that so we can see what you're saying.
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I can email that to you tomorrow, so.
One information, there is a letter from Senator Hale, indeed.
Hang on.
Yeah, I'm addressing that, so I've been interrupted twice.
Hang on, let's let Mr. Mansfield finish. Go ahead, Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, sir. So basically, according to Senator Hale's office, they stated that Finance and Administration understands that larger projects can take some time to complete, up to two to three years. And that would not be seen as problematic. What they require is a reporting on July the 1st of what our intent to do is with funds. So we were told this had to be matching. It's not. I understand that Senator Hale's intentions, eight months after we sign a contract, when he's asked to provide a letter to come in here, states one thing, but it's not, it's different than what we were told beforehand. You know, one big problem with this is the fact that, you know, one thing that was said tonight, the presentation, we have no interest in making this an event center at this juncture. You know, doesn't rule it out in the future. That statement does not rule this out in the future. And we were also told last year with this, and this is where citizens have trust issues and I understand, that there was nowhere in Sumner County that could host an event center. Just last year, just up in November, December, and January, we're still talking about this being an event center. So we've changed it. We just keep on.
All right, Mr. Mansfield, you've made the point about the event center like three times. Let's move on.
Well, my point was, we've been told untruthful information from the tourism department and the budget chairman, that there was no facilities to hold a 1,500 youth event, which is not true because Bagby Ranch can do it. So again, something that's not true. And we need to have the spirit of what we're going to vote on and look at this deed, this reformation deed.
Okay, you've already been there. Let's wrap up unless you've got something new, Mr. Mansfield.
Well, I'll say this. In my opinion, and that of the citizens, this contract needs to be written so that there are zero failure to comply or reversionary clauses. I read this memorandum of understanding, and that's a language, is a failure to comply within seven years, that we give it back and they give us $250,000 and we spend it. The land needs to be turned over to the county outright. I would not vote yes on anything with us not outright owning, not leasing, but outright owning the entire 17 acres having no reverters. And I would do nothing outside of bringing the barn restoration up to the point of where it won't fall down and would simply provide a good place as a backdrop for nonprofit community events on the grounds or agriculture events such as 4H for schools, and it would not compete with private businesses, and I guarantee of that. But at this point, given all the misinformation that I've had on this project and the citizens have had, I move to give the $250,000 back to the state, give the barn back to the Rogers Group so that a private organization can work with them in order to preserve and utilize the barn for nonprofit needs.
There's already a motion on the floor, Mr. Mansfield.
Well, I move to amend it.
It's a contradictory motion. It's out of order.
Well, I move to amend it then. That's my amendment.
You can't, that's a contradictory amendment. You can't do that. It's out of order.
It's the opposite of what the motion is. You can't amend.
That's my ruling. It's contradictory. It's out of order. Commissioner Chris Taylor.
This resolution addresses exactly what we asked it to address, those three concerns. I think we've made it a point ad nauseam, that the final deed can't be negotiated and written until we approve something. We have to approve something, then the law director can finish everything up with the Rogers Group. And if it doesn't match the criteria we set when we approve it, then it's not going to work. It's null and void. She's going to negotiate it to what parameters are that we tell her. But we have to prove something first before we can do that. We're kind of jumping the process the wrong way. We've discussed making sure we do things the right steps. That's one of them. As far as all the other questions and some of the numbers, I'm just going to ask, at times that we maybe cite our sources occasionally in here, no one said at any.
Mr. Hale, please direct your. I got it. Commissioner Taylor, let me, let me rule. Give me just a second.
Yes, sir.
You can direct your comments to the chair, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
Christopher Cross.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I apologize. At no point are we going to establish $3 million, 1.3 or whatever the number was. We said it last week in budget, and we'll say it again. This is a starter money, it's a startup money to get this project going, to put a roof over it. Do I think it makes sense to waste $60,000 to put tarps on something when you could put that 60,000 towards the roof? Yes, sir, absolutely. Do I think it's tough, and we'll have to make a decision and put 500,000 into it and hopefully that'll get everything going? And then the idea is we have the historical committee for what's the use for it? Well, the historical committee is going to decide. And they're not going to be rushed. They're going to take their time because it's going to take a minute or two to raise the money, to actually drive the barn in, to do everything else. There's a mechanism for that that's being set up, for how they can, how we can get the donations, how we can process those donations back to the county. It's included. The historical committee will help decide the function of the barn, at the same time that they're raising the money for the barn. And if it doesn't work and it falls flat on its face, then the Rogers Group pays us back our $250,000. I think we've tried to cover every single thing we could. Will it be perfect? Absolutely not. Nothing can be perfect. But it addresses the county's concerns that were brought up the last time. As far as usage, I think we've established, and Chef Christopher and all those people have done a fantastic job explaining to us why we don't want to do an event center. And I think we'd be dumb not to listen to them. They're experts, so we are. I think we've set up how we're going to raise the money, what it's going to be done with it. I think we've set up how it's going to be decided upon. And don't ever forget, before anybody can spend any money on it, that's taxpayer money, it's got to come through our commission. It's got to come through budget. We have to approve it. All 24 of us have a say on that. We always will. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Chris Taylor. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
I got a, I want to start with a sworn clarification.
Yes.
So if we, if we sit here and we give our spiel because we're on the other side and we don't agree with it, is it going to be allowed that the chairman rebuke everything that we had to say because?
Mr. Taylor, I.
It's supposed to go in the queue in order that you came in the queue.
No, it's a chairman's prerogative. I gave Mr. Taylor an opportunity to address questions as budget chair. I usually give chairman of, chairpersons of committees the opportunity to respond.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I got a legal finance question.
Okay.
There's one commissioner sitting here that was here when the hospital was sold. Who owned that hospital when it was sold?
The county was part of the original creation of the hospital.
Who owned the hospital?
That was, that was a big debate as to who actually owned it.
Okay.
But we ultimately prevailed as part of the settlement that they provided that money to us.
Okay. The sale and the settlement of that money had a resolution tied to it that never was followed through upon, that was supposed to tie it to economic development. Supposed to.
That was the recommendation.
That was the recommendation, not the resolution. The resolution is the law of the county commission, correct?
Correct.
So I want to clarify that because that's been thrown at me, I don't know how many times.
The problem with resolutions are.
You can change them next month.
That's my point. We can change the hospital money and how it's spent any month. It doesn't have to be for economic development. Correct?
If this body chooses to do that.
Exactly. We could sell this building with 13 votes.
Well, that's a completely different.
All right. Let's, Mr. Taylor, I don't see that this has any connection with what we're debating, discussing.
Well, I'm not done.
Mr. Taylor, let's move on.
All right, on the resolution. Okay. The tourism part of it. I was on the tourism board at one time. I asked to be removed because I didn't like the direction back then. Had a former tourism director reach out to me about this project, didn't like the direction either. So, you know, I respect people's opinions. And I tried to offer ideals for this, and I caught flak over it, let me tell you. Because I, you know, I was trying to go along and get along. I offered the agricultural ideals. I offered the FFA, the 4Hs. My degree is in agriculture. I know horses. I know horse barns. I know cows. I know cattle barns. I also know groundhogs and the damage they can do to a barn. You don't only have roof damage out there, you got groundhog damage under the foundation. I went in the barn, I took pictures. There was some kind of critter in there when I was in there. I didn't know I was going to make it out or not, but anyways. Just because it's on my notes here, things that was being presented that I think we can talk about, right?
Sure.
No to early vote in that location. My people already have to drive too far to go to early vote when we have it in one location. We only have two precincts in my whole area with one of the largest districts in the whole county. All right. The money, the $250,000, I'm not going to say anything to you right now that I didn't say to my state senator and my state representative. Them sending us a dangling carrot of $250,000 is like throwing gasoline on a fire of bad They shouldn't have never sent us the money. They should have never made that appropriation. This thing has drug on for almost five years. It's massive resistance every time it came forward. So it was a dangling carrot coming in. Oh, let's call it grant money, so we're going to chase it. My concern is, the $250,000 from the state, that's not protected if everybody walks away. Rogers Group ain't going to pay that back. 250, that's my money, too. That's your money, everybody's money. $250,000 from the hospital fund, it's gone, it's gone. I mean, you know, people, I asked about this land behind the archives building being tied to this project. It indirectly is, even though I was told it wasn't. Because the people on the board of the sign, future sign owners are, were owners of the property. The signers are the board of directors of the sign holder.
Mr. Taylor, there's nothing in this resolution tonight about a sign or sponsorship or anything like that?
It's in the deed.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry. I was wrong.
The sign, let's talk about the sign. You can't put billboards up anywhere you want to anymore. So the sign is your billboard. If we're only getting $40,000 out of placing a sign on that property in that location, we're not getting a good deal. Going to look at the naming rights of some other facilities throughout the country and the county and the state, that's not a good deal whatsoever. Just look at that. You know, and another thing that, you know, we come here and we're asked to spend $500,000 of our hard-working, tax-paying citizens' money. Yeah, there's no tax money. We, you know, property tax money being involved, but like I said earlier with the Meadows, we've stuck our hands in the pockets of our hard-working, tax-paying citizens twice in the last five years. You know, that $250,000 could be used somewhere else for something else that's more beneficial, especially in the times that we're in. I mean, let's look at this. This money that was dangling from the state came before the COVID. I asked the senator to take it back. I asked the state representative to take it back. So, you know, my constituents and the overwhelming number of people that's reached out to me, the vast majority, actually, has told me to walk away. Some didn't tell me to walk, they said run away from this project. So I'll be voting my conscience and on the behalf of my constituents tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Wright.
Just a few months ago, this body asked every division of this county to take a 0% growth budget. We voted on that. I look out here, and some of these people, no grades, cost of living's still going up, 0% growth in the budget. Not just county employees took a hit, but every citizen, because the growth is still going on in this county. Your fire, all your emergency services, every citizen in this county took a hit by 0% growth in the budget. I understand the money is coming from the hospital fund. It's still money. It's $250,000 that could have went somewhere else. Number two, is it ours? Is this barn going to be ours? Yes, it is? Are we sure? This has been bounced around so much. Are we positive? Is it in writing?
It will begin the deed, yes, sir.
I'm listening.
I have to state my point.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Wright. Continue.
I think you know where I stand. The barn is beautiful. Could it be a gem? Yes. But it needs to be done privately, not with county money. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, I want to thank Ms. Witt, Commissioner Witt, for all of her hard work on this. I had an opportunity last week to go out and I did tour the barn. It is absolutely stunning. It's beautiful. The chestnut wood inside, I wanted to go in there 45 years ago when my two brothers and I rode down Gallatin Road to Nashville with mom and dad. Had an opportunity Saturday night with dad driving down. He said, yeah, we used to, my mom and dad used to bring me up here from East Nashville every summer. We always had to ride by the barn and go to Portland to pick strawberries.
There you go.
Never heard that story from dad. So it is a very well-known iconic barn. It is a Sumner County treasure, and it is absolutely beautiful inside. It does need some work, would not be a good event center. Someone stated that, and I think we all know that. And I've told Chris, I've talked to Chef Christopher, and one thing I will not vote on, I love the idea of having an ad hoc committee, but one thing I will never vote on is to compete against private business. And I think most of us feel that way. But we're to a point to where we've been given a gift, I think 10 years from now, if we don't do something tonight, 10 years from now, we're going to look back and we're going to wish we had. It is a, it is a beautiful building with so many possibilities from, and Commissioner Witt mentioned some of the great things it could be used for, from an ag center to a fairgrounds to, you know, a place for the community together. I'm okay with dry docking it, you know, the $250,000 from the hospital fund with the $250,000 state money, maybe putting a roof on there and a, maybe some windows, and then letting this ad hoc committee do its work, do its due diligence to come up with a plan by, what, 2027? Is that right? And I had a question, can I ask the county mayor a question?
Yes, sir.
Can, is it possible, I know Richard Jones, engineer, now works for the planning department, and I know the state's going to require us to do some engineering work on this, and that's going to be a very expensive bill. Is that something that Mr. Jones could help us with on the drawing?
Yes, Commissioner. The state requires anytime we spend $50,000 or more on a building that it's professional services of engineering, an architect has to be used. I've talked to our engineer. He is very capable to be able to do the structural work on that barn. And if this is approved tonight by the county commission, this is pretty much within the tonight by the County Commission, this is pretty much within the scope of stabilizing the barn, putting a roof on it, and even maybe the possibility of replacing the windows and making it completely airtight and secure. So we're hoping we can do that at a very affordable price. I think we can. And we can do it in-house as far as the engineering goes, and then, of course, competitively bid the work. And we can actually bid that out per item, so you wouldn't have to go to a general contractor because we do have a engineer now. Hope that answers your question.
I guess my point is this, if that's going to cost us a chunk of change, the state, if they don't give us the $250,000 and we don't utilize it, somebody else will. They're going to find something to do with it. The hospital funds have been there for years, and I think this would be, I think this is economic development, because I do think in 10 years, we're going to draw a lot of benefits, a lot of good things that could come from that facility once this deed is worked out in the right way. But if we don't do something now, and, you know, if you didn't go look at it, it is beautiful inside, but the damage is starting to really show, and even from the road, I drive that way every day to work, and over the last couple of years, it is really going downhill. But it is, it is, it is a historic, iconic barn, and it is worth saving. It's got a lot of potential.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Tinsley.
Sorry. I'm going to first thank my counterpart, Ms. DeWitt. I know what a hard worker she is, and of the amount of time that she's put in on working on this project, it's really been a labor of love for her, so I want to extend my thanks to her. There's a couple of things that I want to address really quick. First of all, in citizens' comments, somebody thinks that the county still owns a hospital, and the county doesn't own a hospital. So moving forward from that, there's a couple of quick facts about this barn. There's actually an exact twin of this barn in Murray County that's privately owned and used as an event center. It's right across from Rippevill plantation. The other thing is that one of our speakers tonight said that Sumner County wasn't a horse county, and like everybody in here has said, and I think a Gallatin native, Commissioner Cass Hollywood, would also like me to say that Sumner County was definitely a horse county. Actually, most all of the Kentucky Derby winner horses lineage go back to Gallatin and Sumner County. So I think to say that this barn is an historical landmark is really just kind of sad and pathetic. On top of that, I would like to reiterate what Ms. Sullivan said. The state's offering us quarter of a million dollars on this piece of property, and if we turn them down, it's not going to be like one of the other 94 counties in the state doesn't line up with their handout to grab $250,000 for economic benefit. So it's, it's not that I'm saying like just because it's been offered, we should use it, but if we don't use it, it's not like they're just going to tuck it away in a rainy day fine. It's going to be offered to somebody else. And I would like Sumner County to benefit some of, some of it towards the tax dollars that we put towards the state. On top of that, I will, for personal reasons, be abstaining from the vote completely, and I just wanted to make that point clear, that through my professional work, I've been involved with the Rogers Group in the last month, and I think it'd be inappropriate for me to vote on this either way.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Mr. Becker.
I also would like to thank Commissioner DeWitt for all the work she's put into it. I'd actually like to offer an amendment to the resolution that if, if this resolution doesn't pass, that we give the barn back to the Rogers Group. That's my amendment.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Becker, second by Ms. DeWitt. Let's, let's vote on the board on that. So the amendment is, let me restate the amendment. I know it's late. Make sure everybody understands what we're voting on. So the amendment is, is that if we don't approve this tonight, then we give the barn back to the Rogers Group.
Correct.
So, is that good? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Can I second it?
And Mr. DeWitt seconded it.
All right. The resolution to return the property, if it's not approved tonight, is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. 20 votes, 21 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? With 15 affirmative votes, the amendment is approved.
Okay. So we'll back to the main resolution. Mr. Becker, were you done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. And Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Excuse the pun. I hate to beat a dead horse. But I want to thank Ms. DeWitt as well, because I know she's put countless hours in there. But a couple of things that's been mentioned, just for clarification. Someone said something about, you know, we shouldn't spend this because it comes from grants, which are taxpayers' money. I'll make the notification that almost every water grant we've done has been grants.
Mr. Goode, let's stay in the motion, please.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. So the, let me point out something that in my continued due diligence, it's been mentioned about the March 1 deadline. I talked to Senator Hale one day last week, and I'm sure he does not mind me sharing this. And the reason for, he wants this actually, and obviously with the amendment we just passed it, either will or won't pass, but the reason for the March 1 deadline was is because if they don't have that money obligated, and I would almost say ditto to everything Mr. Sullivan said and Mr. Tinsley said, but was because if they, if it's not obligated by then, he wants to put that money back in the coffers because of their fiscal year at State Capitol. And that, and he made that very clear just this past week. It was also said that some of the people that were involved, and I want to take everybody back to committee, I'm sure this is on the owl, but using Mr. Bagby, he was brought up a couple of times. I'll remind everybody, in committee, he made the suggestion that he hoped we did fix the roof and fix the building. He was obviously one of them against an event center, which we've addressed that, but he said in committees that he hoped that we did do this. It would be the smart thing to do. Those are his words. I'm paraphrasing, so, and I agree with Mr. Sullivan wholeheartedly that the hospital, that this would be economic development. I especially agree with him that if, if we don't do this, we're going to really regret it a decade from now. And I will say, also in my due diligence beside Senator Hale, you know, I've talked to Hendersonville Alderman, Hendersonville City Councilman, the Hendersonville IDB, certain members, and all are really in favor of this, again, being right in between, as Mr. DeWitt said, Hendersonville and Gallatin, and the opportunities that it would give our county. And, you know, at some point, we have to do positive things for our kids and grandkids to have something that none of us will maybe not have the opportunity to realize. So I certainly hope we do this at this juncture. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. And Mr. Hinton.
Let me just throw this in for whatever it's worth. The world champion Tennessee Walker horse comes from right here. Belonged to Billy Hale. Ebony Masters piece. He was born in Goodlettsville. So that's for whatever it's worth. And if we keep this up all night, we're not going to change one opinion. I call for the question.
Okay. Question's been called, seconded by Mr. Foster. A yes vote, a yes vote is to call the question and then debate, a no vote is to continue debating.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to provide a personal...
Okay.
There was a statement made in the hearing on what I said about the quote on the roof. It was a $60,000 quote that we have, we're becoming a roof, not the tarps on the barn.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Okay, so a yes vote is to end debate, a no vote is to continue debate.
All right. The call for question is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? With 18 affirmative votes, the question is approved.
All right. Let's go to the main motion, and we will vote. What's that?
We don't have any questions.
Yeah. So the, back to the main motion, a yes vote is to approve the appropriation of $250,000.
It's actually $253,000.
$253,000, whatever the res...
$295,000. Yeah.
No. Oh, you want to do a roll call? Roll call? Yeah, let's do a roll call. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Yeah. Got you. Thank you.
All right. We're going to roll. We will do a roll call vote on the resolution as amended. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
No.
Wright.
No.
Gemen.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Driver.
No.
Foster.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Ring.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
DeWitt.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Echols.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Hyde.
No.
Tucker.
Yes.
Becker.
No.
Chris Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Goode.
Yes, sir.
Kruger.
Yes.
Langford.
Yes.
Mansfield.
No.
Guthrie.
Yes.
Nipper.
Yes, sir.
With 16 affirmative votes, the resolution is approved.
Okay. Motion passes by a vote of 16 to...
Six to one.
16 to six.
Six to one.
16, six to one. All right. Commissioner Chris Taylor.
All right. 2008-09 appropriating $314,340 is carryover of fiscal year 2020 funding for school projects. This was actually asked about by Commissioner Taylor earlier, but it was not on the consent it was on this one. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Shell. All in favor, say aye.[1750.75]